This is the October 3 meeting of the Kingston Planning Board. We're starting the meeting at 6:46 PM. The first item on the, on the agenda tonight is a joint meeting with the Historic District Commission. So I'd like to introduce everyone sitting at the table. They're all Historic District Commission members or Planning Board members or both. So, starting at my left, we have Stanley Chalet, who is a Historic District Commission member. We have Rob Terzolo, who is a member of the Planning Board and a member of the Historic District. We have Steve Padfield, Planning Board member. We have Peter Coffin, Planning Board member. My name is Lynn Merrill. I'm the Chair. Beside me is Susan Prescott, who is Chair of Historic District Commission. Robin Carter is the Land Use Administrator. Chris Bashaw is the Representative to the Planning Board from the Board of Selectmen. We have Peter Baiki, Planning Board member. Robin Dugay is the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Glenn Greenwood is the Town Planner. Glenn Koppelman is the Selectmen's Representative to the Historic District Commission. Virginia Morse is Historic District Commission. Are you Vice Chair? Vice Chair? Dan Doyle is Historic District. And Madeline Mullett, last but not least, Historic District. So, welcome, everyone. This year, we thought, rather than just reacting to all of the proposals that had brought forth in front of us, we'd actually do some planning. And we decided to take a look at the ordinances and determine if there were some things we should be looking at to meet the needs, current and future needs of the town. We began by looking at the Historic District ordinance. And the reason for that was because Envision Kingston was done in 2019, I think it was? 2016, was it that long ago? And there were a number of suggestions that were brought forth from that meeting, some of which have been enacted, the majority of which haven't. And we wanted to see if our Historic District ordinances would somehow conflict with some of the suggestions from that, and if so, have a discussion with you to see if those conflicts should remain or not, and how everybody felt about it as both boards. As it turned out, when we went through, we didn't see any conflicts, which was great. But it was great to go through the process, to know that anyone that wanted to begin on a Envision Kingston II project, at least they'd know that there wouldn't be any impediments right in front of them. So that's sort of how we came to this. Then after that, there were a few things that we did find in the ordinance that we thought we might discuss with you and get your feeling on it. We thought perhaps you might go through things and talk to us about what you might want to do, so that when we left the meeting, everybody would be on the same page. So, with that said, one of the first things that came up in our discussions was mobile homes. Because it said mobile homes were prohibited from the district. And we felt that we didn't have a definition of mobile home. So we began, because manufactured homes.
That, okay, it's green, I can speak. Before we go into the details, I think one of the other things, as we listened to Planning Board first discussing this, was we wanted to see how we could make it as clear as possible for any applicant when they were trying to apply for, in our case, an HDC certificate of approval or whatever project they were doing. Were the ordinances clear? Did they get direction for all the information they needed to know? So it wasn't just some of the details, like you're starting on now, but we said, let's make sure that the poor applicant isn't befuddled by what the process is. And so I think that's some of the things that you worked on, and, you know, where should we put this, here or there, and number it, and certainly some of the things that we worked on. So I just wanted to mention that first. That's okay.
And that was definitely one of the things that we, as a Planning Board, have been trying to do for the last, oh, probably six, five or six years, is really, actually, longer than that, I think, taking a look at all of our ordinances and making certain that the processes are streamlined without compromising anything that has to do with the ordinances and the regulations.
The Historic District Commission has had a number of meetings on this subject throughout the summer. And we actually went through our ordinances and we have, we did do some proposed changes. So if we could hand those out.
Yeah, absolutely.
The original, just so we know we're all on the same page here.
No, good.
The original wording is in black and changes are in red, or proposed changes are in red. And we went through it with a fine tooth comb.
Great.
It was super fun this summer, but it was really important for us to do this. Thanks very much to Virginia and Madeline also for helping out with this project. It was huge. So, I mean, you can continue on, I don't know.
No, no, I think if we wanted to start at 1.2.4.
Just go in.
And it says, "and manufactured homes." One of our problems is the definition of a manufactured home is not only a mobile home, but it's also a modular home. And modular homes are stick-built in a factory rather than being stick-built on-site. So we felt that many of them, people can't tell whether it's a modular home or whether it's a stick-built-on-site home. Because of the pandemic, more and more and more homes are being built as manufactured homes and all over the town, in fact, all over the country, and nobody can tell the difference. So, not permitting, if maybe we want to keep it at mobile versus adding manufactured to it, because that would, manufactured would prohibit modular homes.
So the terminology manufactured is not ideal?
Well, I'm just, it may not be. The intent, I think we all understand.
Yes.
But not certain that we actually understand. We want to make sure we don't prohibit something, that we want permitted.
Yeah, I think when manufactured homes first came about, they were sort of a, put on, it was, yeah, like double Y, but they were, they were similar in size and shape, flat-roofed, and were be, just the difference was they were built off-site, trucked in with, you know, tieback around them, and then put on permanent location. And they didn't have axles and wheels or any of the mobile home definition. But if you look just north of Saddleup, there's a beautiful example of a house that was built, manufactured home, modularly. And it's at least four units, maybe five, that have been put together, two-story, standard gable roof construction, could be manufactured to look exactly like a colonial or whatever. And it, right now, you're just trying to differentiate between where the actual stick-and-board construction takes place, as opposed to what the final product looks like. So, in line with the goals, is to keep period-style houses, you're better off leaving manufactured out of the prohibitions and just staying the stylehouse that you, as you've done already, that you want to see, because otherwise, it's, it is less expensive to manufacture offsite, but it's not necessarily producing a product that looks any better than something that was manufactured onsite, especially if you go low-end onsite with a, with a non-period piece, you don't get what you want.
Yes.
And also, they're not less expensive, they're just a little faster sometimes. And that's one of the reasons that people have been attracted to them lately, is not necessarily cost savings, because that's not there anymore, but the fact that they can be built faster.
So Peter, are you suggesting or recommending that we leave out the term manufactured home and use our guidelines of what would fit into the Historic District?
I would say continue to use your guidelines for the stylehouse and have consultation for somebody who's going to.
Whether it's manufactured away or stick-built here.
Regardless of where the hammers and nails were put together, yeah, I think it's, that's a, that's kind of an outdated theory, that manufactured housing is similar to mobile homes. And, and so I would say you had a fine article that, in the 1200, Article 1200, that describes the styles and everything that you want to see in the district. And that's where your level of involvement should be, not telling them how, how to put it together. So, and that way, if somebody wants to stick-build a house, you know, that's a Alpine A-frame or something that doesn't exactly fit Historic Kingston, you know, they say, well, it's not a manufactured home, you know, it just meets your definitions.
Lynn, I don't have my full binder here. Do we have a definition for manufactured home in our definitions? And you're looking for it right now? All right.
Yep. So the definition of a mobile home or house trailer, a prefabricated structure or dwelling unit which is designed for long-term and continuous residential occupancy, in which is designed to be moved on wheels as a whole or in sections which may be temporarily or permanently affixed to real estate.
And Lynn?
Mm-hmm.
Interestingly, in the RSAs, under manufactured housing, there's a definition for manufactured housing and there's a definition for pre-site-built housing.
Ah.
And they're different.
Nice. And in the real estate books, it says you've got manufactured, modular, and mobile.
Right. So, I mean, they're fairly long definitions. I'm happy to read them if you'd like.
Go at it.
All right. So manufactured housing means any structure transportable in one or more sections, which in the traveling mode is eight body feet or more in width and 40 body feet or more in length, or when erected on-site is 320 square feet or more, and which is built on a permanent chassis and designed to be used as a dwelling with or without a permanent foundation when connected to required utilities, which include plumbing, heating, and electrical heating systems contained therein. Manufactured housing as defined in this section shall not include pre-site-built housing as defined in blah, blah, blah. And so pre-site-built housing is, as, let's see, means any structure designed primarily for residential occupancy, which is wholly or in substantial part made, fabricated, formed or assembled in off-site manufacturing facilities in conformance with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, minimum property standards, and local building codes for installation or assembly and installation on the building site. For purposes of this subdivision, pre-site-built housing shall not include manufactured housing. So they distinguish them differently.
Could you let me know just?
Sure. The manufactured housing one is 674:31. And the pre-site-built housing definition is 674:31- small a.
So if I'm understanding that what you just read accurately, manufactured housing could be a mobile home, pre-site-built structure, there not be?
Correct.
So we're really not talking about manufactured housing, but the pre-site-built structure?
Makes sense to me that we should differentiate it out.
This is the state or recent definition versus the common definition in Delphi. But if that's the case, then mobile homes and manufactured homes would not be permitted
in Historic Districts, but pre-site-built structures could.
Maybe we should actually say that.
Yeah. It would reduce the ambiguity and we could even reference the RSAs.
Reference the RSA and also reference the styles that stop.
Right, yeah. And you could say, you know, pre-built, then as long as they are consistent with your style guidelines.
Yeah, that's usually when we have someone bring in samples. We'd want to see who the manufacturer is. Maybe they're good, maybe they're not, so that's what we would look at.
I think the definition might be a little vague, because when you think of pre-manufactured housing, you think of a trailer park, and of course, that's prohibited. But some of these houses are not built on-site. They're, they're built in modules and they're transported to the building site. Would that have anything to do with manufactured homes? Because some of them are built in a factory, then transported to where it's going to be assembled altogether.
That's the difference between the two definitions that I just read. One of them is essentially a mobile home, or could be a mobile home. The other one is one that's built in a factory. It's considered pre-site-built housing. So they're two separate definitions.
But in regard to the town of Kingston, would factory-made modules be prohibited? Or do the people building the house have to be on-site to build the house?
So what we're talking about, Stanley, is adding to our definitions the prefabricated in a factory house, so that they will be permitted, and there's a definition for them that matches the state definition. And the manufactured or mobile home would have its definition, and that would be what's prohibited, basically, those that are still on an axle.
Okay.
Right there, from mobile homes manufactured, the RSAs that he just read define.
Any further discussion on that? Looks like we have consensus on that one. Any other thoughts? Okay, what's next? Did we land with, we would leave that as mobile homes and manufactured homes will not be permitted? Right? Is that what we landed with?
Yes.
But we would allow pre-site. We'd allow that, but we would not allow. Right, yep. And refer to the guidelines. So that would all be put in that 102.4.
And you're going to cite the RSAs on the.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because you know people are going to say, what's the difference between, quote, "cite" pre-site?
So what we'll do is we'll not only cite the definition, but we'll tell them where to go in the ordinances defined the definition.
Before we move on to the next one, can I just note, there's two instances where the word "fine" is used and.
F-I-N-E?
F-I-N-E. This might seem trivial, but it does not seem to me that if we're going to update this to sound less subjective and less colloquial, I would get rid of the word "fine," because it just seems completely unnecessary.
I assume you mean "fine" is an okay, not as a tariff?
Fine is an okay. And I get, so page three is the first one, 102.5A, almost to the bottom of the first paragraph. "From its general appearance along the plains is typical of a small New England village containing many fine examples of colonial architecture." I think we can just say, "many examples of colonial architecture." And then the next would be page five, first line. "Historic District Two is a residential area containing some fine old homes." I think just, we could say, "containing old homes."
Or antique homes.
Yeah, I actually like the "fine old homes."
I do too. I do too.
I don't think it's "fine" as in, they're okay, or they're acceptable. Fine means really nice.
Really nice examples, right.
So could we say that? Some examples of.
Exemplary?
Yeah. Because it just reads very informal, and like, it's something you would say to the person sitting next to you, not written in a town ordinance. I don't, maybe I'm.
Yeah.
How about exemplary?
Exemplary is a good word.
Exemplary?
Yeah. Some exemplary old homes? Okay.
In both instances?
It does, the word does fit, because usually when you talk about styles of buildings in the Historic District, it's a style of a particular period, it's an example of that period and.
Which it says in the first one, so I think you don't, you can just say, "examples of colonial architecture," and take the word "fine" out.
Well, I think they're trying to say that they're a higher version of a colonial. So they're trying to, exemplary, they're trying to make that a little bit higher example. So I think they do want that adjective in there.
You could say, "containing good example, many good examples of," you know, that's true.
Yeah. The "fine," the definition of "fine" means very good.
Very good.
Like, "fine dining."
And, and.
I don't see why one of them should be changed, but that's me.
Yeah. But if you change the first one, Glenn Greenwood, do we need, is that just a typo thing that we can, a typo that we can move?
These are zoning changes.
These are zoning changes, okay.
May I ask for a vote? Can you tell us if we could go for Susan's document, one by one, instead of skipping around?
So, I don't think we're at agreement on the word "fine."
That has never bothered me personally. I just think of it as very excellent. I mean, you could use any other word from a thesaurus that means the same thing, it's fine, excellent.
Hey, there's many publications out there, there are fine home building, fine woodworking, fine this.
Fine dining, right.
Yeah. Fine jewelry. I mean, it's, it doesn't mean just okay.
I don't have a problem with the word "exemplary" on page three, "containing many exemplary examples of colonial architecture." If that really bothers you, it doesn't work very well the second time, but it is almost cumbersome.
Yep.
I'm also happy to just let it go. It just reads very awkward to me.
On any of these that you want a resolution on, do you want to do it by motion, or you just want to just get consensus?
I think by consensus, unless anybody feels that you'd rather take a vote.
No, because I think if you come up with something, it'll be a hearing on it anyway. They'll have their hearing and we'll have more hearing, so that at that point, we'll be taking a vote, I think just getting something that would be approvable by both boards would be nice.
Well, the hearing would take place at the Planning Board.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, that's right. This does.
We just want to make sure everybody's buying in on everything that we do, both sides.
Well, if you want to weigh in, then I'm, I'd prefer to keep it as the word "fine." That's my take.
Well, let's take a vote. All in favor of "fine"?
How many are "fine" with "fine"?
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the "fines" have it.
It's a good way to do it.
All right, next.
This is, still on page three at the bottom. Instead of the word residences, single-family dwelling or two-dwelling units, two-family home, accessory dwelling unit, apartment, and incidental uses. In the case of an accessory dwelling unit, the standards found in Article 206 apply. And this is to keep this in line with the text found in RR Zone 104.4. J.
So is the Chinburg project still on the table? And would this stop that project?
Is the what?
Is the Chinburg project still on the table?
Oh.
Because if we make this change.
To my knowledge, it is.
It is, so this change would not affect that project. It shouldn't, because this is the way it is today. So, the Attorney Grandy told us that we should loosen, or tighten up the term "residence." It was too loose. So we went into the rural residential zone language and just pulled that right into the Historic District, so it listed exactly what was allowed there.
So the way I envision this is that with the Seminary, Chinburg project, they would have the right to go to ZBA to ask for permission to do a many-apartment complex.
Right.
In that building or in that site. And then, when that, let's say that was approved by the ZBA, they'd come back to the HDC for the details of appearance.
Right. Which is what we were working on with them prior.
Which is how we had been working with them.
So they had, they were planning to go before ZBA anyway?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, because we had a situation come up before, because there are some units in the, in the Main Street District that have multiple apartments in them, and it was pointed out that the definition is residences. And, and so they were not required to get a variance, because, well, in this, some cases, they're, it's pre-existing, but there is nothing prohibiting multiple.
So this is a really sticky part because, for us, because Attorney Grandy told us that this was way too broad and we needed to tighten it up and get some wording that was clearer than the broad term residences. So we used the wording from HD.
Rural residential.
Rural residential to do this, and that does not preclude Chinburg from going to ZBA and getting a variance to do this.
Right, but you're seeing what I'm saying is under the current definition, which just says residences.
That's correct.
He would not have to go to the ZBA.
That is correct, but.
I don't, I don't know if it's true, though.
Yes, as have two other.
Absolutely how the town has guided him to this point.
As would other people.
So we do this, this is going to, this could look like it's targeting that project to stop it, because the town has already given him guidance that he does not have to go to ZBA, that because it just says residences, it's permitted. So it's, it's throwing new legal roadblocks in front of that project that's already come before the town. If it hadn't come before the town, it might not be an issue, but it's already come before Historic Districts.
So Chinburg has come before the town and the town has told him he did not need to go to ZBA, is that correct?
That is correct. Well, let's, let's, I guess I need to backtrack on that.
Parse that out a little bit.
Yeah. There has been no public hearing with Chinburg with any group other than the Historic District, and I don't believe you've had a pub, what is classified as a public hearing.
We have not.
You've had meetings with them, but not a, not a formal public hearing.
There hasn't been an occasion.
Correct.
And likewise, hasn't been an application to the Planning Board. But there have been several conversations, and those conversations all reflected that because of the wording in the Historic District as it stands now, that project would not require a ZBA action for relief for apartments. Correct. He's been told that.
Oh, yes, I know.
So, Peter, for your reference that there are multiple apartments in the Historic District, that is true. None of them have been approved by the HDC. Those are way old ones like Culker Hall. Some may be.
They were the dormitories from the Seminary.
Not just the dormitories, some may have been sort of grandfathered by neglect. And so, to my record, and we could look back to the beginning of the Historic District Commission, the Commission has never approved a multifamily dwelling in the Historic District without a ZBA approval.
Yes.
Right, but I'm just going, based on the advice of the attorney to the ZBA, which was that they were permitted, because the word residences didn't preclude it. We have another building lots, ordinance, which we're going to be dealing with later, the 301.2, that says that you can't, any, every building lot can only have a single-family or two-family, a single-two-family dwelling on it. or two family, a single two-family dwelling on it, which is obviously not true, because commercial districts and other areas, that doesn't pertain, but, so anyways, the, as far as each historic district, because I think it was originally an overlay zone, I think that's where the confusion came in.
No, it wasn't, it was not.
It was not?
It was never an overlay.
That has been a point of confusion with the attorney, and she now understands that it is not an overlay zone.
Well, at any rate, because the only guidance is that residences are permitted, not single family or two-family residences, which is true of the rural residential, that, that the, that multi-family residences were, were allowed. And, so if we get rid of the, that 30, whatever the article is that says you can only have a single family or two-family residence on any building lot in the town, including commercial and industrial, then, and the historic district ordinance doesn't change, then multi-family residences will still be allowed in the historic district, which they are now, so. I think what Lynn was pointing out is that with Chinburg property not having made a formal application, they haven't gained what sanctuary or whatever, and within, when they did come before the planning board, planning board would be forced, and after March, say, or after an ordinance, proposed ordinance went, was posted, then they would have to go, under the new proposed ordinance, they would have to go to the ZBA for relief. And it does sound like it might be targeted, and the question is whether they might be grandfathered based on, you know, getting some kind of application in or something.
Wouldn't they be grandfathered because they've already been working with the town?
No, it's the application.
Yeah, they wouldn't be officially grandfathered, but it would, absolutely, they'd have an avenue for civil recourse, civil suit recourse, because they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars already, and then they could go for potential loss of profits if for some reason they felt it cost them more money to go through the ZBA process, or if they were in fact denied from it. I think it's a tremendous liability for that, because, but there is no way to officially grandfather them unless a complete application has been submitted.
How about we get them to put that through, and then we fix this? Well, that's what we, that's what we talked about earlier as a planning board, was we should leave this here until that project's approved, and then address it at that time. Well, I'm kind of nervous about that. There, because of the housing shortage right now, there's a huge, we just got an article from the Preservation Alliance, that there's a shortage of houses, and that developers are gobbling up homes, especially in historic districts, because they're cheaper, they're older, they can get them cheaper, and they're gobbling them up, cutting them up, and walking away, and they're making a mint, but they're destroying areas by doing that. And we're not an urban area, so if that were to happen down our historic district, that could, that could totally change the look of our historic district. So we're trying to stop that from happening. We have, we have ADUs, we have apartments that you can add to add relief for homeowners, but if we were to allow multi-family down the entire historic district, that, that would destroy our historic district. We've preserved it for over 50 years.
And I think that's why it's great to especially bring that up, because I think if any of the boards in town are aware of that, you know, obviously, this was a very specific project, and there were so many restrictions on trying to preserve this building, and, you know. And I, so I think that boards would probably be much more cautious if people came to town and said, hey, your ordinance says this, can I just raise this, can I raise this building and throw up apartments? I don't think the boards would guide them that way. I think the only reason I think the town was willing, whether at the select board or the planning board, was having, willing to have all these open talks, is because there were so many moving parts between the SAU trying to sell the property, and obviously for them to make that kind of investment, they wanted to know, hey, what is our pathway and what are we looking at? So I would hope that any board would be cautious about saying, oh yeah, just go for it, buy it, buy it all up and knock it down, because you definitely don't want to see that.
Well, and the other, the other part of their article is to reuse buildings, reuse the seminary, make a sacrifice, do a, you know, allow apartment buildings, because they are going to save such a significant building that's on the national register, so that's a win-win for your town. And that's what many of the historic districts are doing around the state, because if they have an older building and they are preserving it on the exterior as it is, they're turning them into doctor's offices, or they're turning them into apartments, but they're keeping the exterior as it is, so that it doesn't change, it doesn't even look like its apartments. So for example, when we used to own the building at 11 Church Street, people were shocked to know that we had six apartments in there. Right, well, it depends on the lot. It depends on... Because that was a big lot. Well... It was big enough to put... It's like half an acre. But when you, the idea is, it's up to you, as a historic district, to make certain that the exterior looks the same, because they're saying that by sometimes converting the interior, it's actually saving some of these old buildings, was one of the points that they were bringing forward. Yep. I know that my grandparents helped keep their building forever on Bartlett Street when they turned that into apartments in the 1950s. Yep. Because they couldn't afford to live there without it, and they have four units in that building, and yet the building still looks, you know, like it belongs, shall we say. So there's ways to make them like they belong, and there's ways to make them look like they don't belong, that, maybe that's where we need to do the tightening of making certain that, and keeping it the way it is now, so we can get that project through without any more hurdles, they have enough in front of them now.
To Chris's point, though, I'm wondering if this doesn't, if the language in here is remain, remains vague, and this project proceeds knowing that that's the desire, is that potentially a loophole then, that other developers could exploit to push projects through before the language is tightened?
Yes.
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 And there's a...
So what's, what's the solution to that then?
Well, I think the way we're looking, I think, I think we're all having a knee-jerk reaction to 186 Main Street, in some ways.
Yeah.
Well, and it is just, it's what's happening right now. There is a crisis.
The trend is rent the room.
Yep.
And if you don't tighten up the word residence, rent the room could happen tomorrow in any building.
Well, that, maybe that's something we could be doing.
And that is kind of the example we have at 186 Main, which just, why is it there? Because of residents. Can it happen anywhere? Yep, it's happening there, and that's, that would be the, oh, you let them do it there.
So what if we tightened up rent the room? What if we tighten up what? Rent the room. So we don't allow boarding houses? Well, I think, I don't think we do.
Diversion language?
I don't think we allow boarding houses, which is why that whole thing happened.
So, excuse me, as long as you stay a year and a day, it's not a boarding house.
Yeah.
Therefore, I can rent the room and it's not a boarding house, even if I only rent it for a year and a day, so you can't fix it with the term boarding house, is all I'm saying, Lynn.
Well, I wasn't saying fix it with the term boarding house, I was saying find a way to perhaps not, because that's really hard, because like my brother on Ball Road has had a roommate in his house for probably 20 years. And I think that's okay, you're allowed to have two people that aren't related, right? So that's... Well, they actually have more than that, but, because his, you know, the rest of his family is necessarily legally related. Right, right.
And that one word, I think, makes it all okay.
Everything's okay.
Yeah, I definitely think it's an, it's definitely an open loophole, and I understand the need, I just, the timing is terrible.
Is there any...
With a, with a project, in particular, of this size, scope, and financial resources...
And we want this project.
Seek, you know, damages is very, very scary, quite frankly, so...
Nothing in that purchase and sales agreement, nothing in that whole deal that said, yes, you can put apartments when they sign.
It wouldn't have the authority to overstep the, the planning board's authority for ordinances or the ZBA's, they couldn't include that in a purchase and sales.
Do, do we know if they're planning on putting an application in before the end of the year?
I haven't heard a word from them.
Could that save us for...
I know, I know Glenn and I worked with them to help get some grants for like the demolition stuff.
The demolition, right.
So we felt that was a positive step, that they're moving towards, towards that, but I haven't heard anything official from them.
I think... I mean, Glenn might, I'm sorry, Glenn Greenwood might have more details, but the last conversation that I had with Mr. Chinburg happened to be not about his project, but just other stuff in general, and he's just so buried with projects around this state and in Maine, I mean, he's bought so many old mill properties and he's, he's got lots of stuff going on, but, and Glenn, I think you're aware of this, that he was having difficulty getting a septic system designed.
Yes, that is, that is, that is the most recent thing, is they are, my understanding is that there have been some discussions, because they may have under, underestimated the amount of land and space that they needed for appropriate septic system, so I think there's, I think there's stuff going on and other boards to find a solution to that.
I think his challenge in the septic system caused him to perhaps take his focus away from here and put it into other places where he was able to move forward.
But he has located some land in the area where he might be able to put a septic system, and they're trying to come to a financial accommodation.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe Glenn could contact them and get them to put something in, to, because... You can't do that. I know, I know, but if they were getting close, they could, and then it would take care of everything.
Yeah, I just worry about that, because then if we edge them in and if anything comes up for a cause for denial, they'll be like, what are you talking about? You, you encouraged us to do this, we thought this was a done deal.
Right, yeah.
The steps we've taken so far, they, they have been granted an award for a grant for $500,000 to cover the cost of demolition.
Right, right.
That's, Eric is going to think long and hard before he walks away from that.
Right.
And I had heard the same things that you just reflected on, and I talk with his rep about once a month, and when they got the demolition grant, they were very excited because they, I think they were getting close to some sort of agreement, so, but I haven't seen an application, that's, that's the cold, hard reality that we have to focus on right now when we think about what we're going to do to the zoning ordinance.
My fear is, if they drag their feet for another year, then we're out in the cold for another year, we're totally unprotected, and it's pointed out that we're unprotected.
Void of an application, is there any other mechanism to grandfather the project?
No, no.
Okay.
I stopped them.
Question? How, and I note that your board is going to talk about this later with regard to 301.1 lot regulations. Right now, it says 301.1B, every building lot shall have no more than one single family home or one, two-family dwelling thereon, and that applies to the whole town, that includes historic district, does it not?
It does, and their attorney, one of the attorneys in a recent case made that point, that we can't just ignore that, which, which we have been since, we've obviously allowed building lots to be built with, you know, commercial enterprises and apartment buildings and anything else.
We allowed an assisted living facility.
Yep.
With many, many, many occupants and rooms and...
We've allowed age-restricted developments that are condos, so they're all one land unit, and there are 30 units on them.
Doesn't that mean...
I mean, there are discrepancies on this all over the place.
Oh, yeah, this, this, that's got to go away, that paragraph, town attorney, anyway, I know you're going to work on that.
Doesn't that mean Chinburg would have to get a variance anyway?
Well, according to our ordinances, yes, but apparently we don't do that, no, it's been totally ignored.
No, but yes.
For years.
The planning board has never sent anything to the ZBA saying this industrial complex needs to get a variance for the two, you know, the one or two family rule only, only thing you can build.
Well, I thought that was only for residences anyway, one or two family.
You think so?
And then there was business.
This is just lot regulations, it doesn't say residential lot.
Okay.
The big challenge is, how do you make something modern look like something colonial? I looked at many modern colonial places, they don't look colonial as made, so that's the big challenge. I don't know if you can do this three centuries later, or what was going on in the 1700s, or the 1800s.
I think the home at 2 Scotland Road is a good example, on the corner of Scotland Road and Main Street. That's a really good example of building a new house and having it look like it belongs.
Yeah, my insurance company seems to think that for a few hundred extra thousand dollars, you can do it, which they're willing to charge me extra for the privilege of having a 150-year-old house, even though you can't rebuild it to be 150 years old.
So Stanley, I think right now what we're discussing is whether, how can we control multi-family development? Can we, do we want to, are we going to, how does it fit with what we already have for ordinances, not so much appearance right now, but actual use, and what use is legal by our ordinances, or do we want to change them? I think that's where we're focused right at the moment.
Well, you already established a precedent with the assisted family living.
Well, we were just saying there are several precedents set with the...
So you have to go ahead with it, whether you like it or don't like it.
Well, I don't know about that, but, so there are several examples in which we haven't followed, 301 dot, 1A, a B.
Could we make it so that we say residences, and that we work as the Chinburg is a business? Could we separate it somehow that way? Because that's really a business. That's going to make every multi-family a business. Good, good.
Well, technically, they are.
Technically, they are. They are. Rentals are businesses.
Two families.
Right, is a multi-family.
It has to be called a multi-family, three or units, and it has to be an industrial, that's a residential for the family.
And I don't know that that would then resolve both grandfathering them and prohibiting future use that was business.
I think it would, because now you're saying no more, and that everybody that's there is there, so you're obviously grandfathered, pre-existing.
By virtue of ownership.
Right, right. Because I think that's, we're not, we're not a city, we're a rural historic district, so if, if we were putting out multi-families and rural residential, hey, go ahead, but you, you want to keep your historic district historic. And so if you're, if you're cutting up buildings into, some of them can go, I mean, you can go up, depending on the size of your house, you could make 10 apartment built, apartments in a house, possibly, you've got to put the parking, you've got to put the trash facility, I don't know, but it could be, it could be up there, there's still big houses. It would be pretty hard with the minimum size apartment that we have. We have, we have restrictions on how... Right, 800 square feet, right? 600. Is it 600? 600, okay. So if you have a 2,400 square foot house, you could have four. But we have some big houses down on, on the historic, so it could, it could get big.
So what if we, what's worst-case scenario, we leave the wording in this section alone?
And just say residence?
Just as residences, and then talk about this next year. Fingers crossed that Chin, fingers crossed that Chinburg and the seminary project moves forward a little bit, and that we don't get inundated with... Yeah. But it's a risk, it's going to be a risk. So is that risk bigger than, you know, if we get our, the town into trouble?
I would support that proposal.
Yeah, could we, could we, as soon as their application comes in, have a, a hearing, be, be ready for that, and then, then it would stop it from anyone else coming through, because we've had a hearing on it, after, after Chinburg's application has come in?
I don't know that that...
Even if it's in February, March next year?
No, you, you, you can't, you can't do it prior to 180, 120 days before the vote.
Okay, I'm trying.
Specifically for the, what you were trying to do.
Well, yeah.
Is why that limit is there.
Yeah, and there's no other wording, we could tighten it up, there's nothing else we can put in there? We felt that, we felt that it would jeopardize the project if we did anything. We felt that, we felt that it would jeopardize the project if we did anything. If anything. And we just needed to wait. I mean, while, while we thought it was great discussion, we had a discussion on it. We, as the planning board, felt that needed to wait a year.
I would, I would support that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd, I'd be in support of that because I, I was gonna say, if you, if you left that in there, if I had, when it came time, if, to take a vote, I would have to vote against it. And as we've seen, if those split on a lot of things, they're not passing when it comes. So you don't, I wouldn't want to jeopardize everything else that you're looking to affect by a hang-up on something that I just look at as a liability to the town.
Right, right. And it would be a liability if that's the case.
It would put the town in a bad position.
And we want them to come in and fix our seminary. Save it.
Yep.
Lynn, what does the planning board have in mind for 301 that we were just looking at?
We have not thoroughly discussed it. I don't think we've discussed it at all. So that's part of our discussion later tonight.
And I, and I think honestly, what we want to say, thank you.
We do want to hear from you.
I think, I think honestly, what we need to consider is saying, is acknowledging that we have several districts that allow for different densities. And in that section, we should say that. We should say that this does not supersede our age-restricted housing ordinance, the multifamily provisions we have in the C2 zone, but with, with, but we need to spell them out in that section so that it's clear that that's the underlying requirement for the town, but there are exceptions in districts throughout town.
Naming the ones we've already allowed, even though they were illegal by what we had for failure.
That we've already created? It's not a, really isn't a hard fix, but it's a necessary fix.
Right. Because you can't leave it there and have a public discussion of this. I, I know the public-
Well, there's some public here.
There is one public here.
There's one public here, and not do something about it. Just leave it there. Okay.
Yep.
As a consensus vote, how many in favor of leaving the terminology for 1.51A as it is?
It has to. It has to.
Is there a timeline on that?
I don't want to, but I'm going to. I know.
Hey.
I don't know, but we just got it.
Just until next year, until-
We'll discuss it again next year.
This time next year.
I'm putting that on discuss in 2024.
So now we're on to page four.
Before we move-
Okay.
From that, I just wanted to make a quick point, and that is you're defining Main Street Historic District in here as the, to the further boundary of the Sanborn Regional High School property. And just for cleaning things up, maybe you should say former Sanborn Regional High School property.
Where are you at?
On page, in the ordinance 102.2, the Historic District 1, the definition in there. It says on Church Street, the district should go, it's the defining paragraph that defines the district. And if you're gonna modify the, you're modifying this ordinance, I am back-
Peter, Peter, none of us know where you are.
Oh, 102.2, of page one.
Thank you, thank you.
102.2, Historic District 1.
Dan knew, and I'm all set now.
And, and five lines up from the bottom, it says, "To the further boundary of the Sanborn Regional High School property. All Sanborn Regional School District property fronting on Main Street, excepting Athletic Field and Church Street." Well, that should be, that, that is still SRSD property, Chase and Athletic Field.
So why don't we just give map and lot?
What?
Why don't we just give map and lot of that property? The map and the lot number of that property instead of saying Sanborn Regional-
Exactly, yeah. That would be the best way. The map and lot number for the former high school.
All right. Moving on to page four. So we are in 102.5. Oh, gosh, I don't know. One, two. Every building lot in Historic District 1 that has a dwelling thereon shall not have more than one additional structure for use as permitted in accordance with Article 102.5.1. And we would propose the change to add, except for an additional dwelling, for the purposes of this restriction, an accessory dwelling shall, unit shall not be considered an additional dwelling and are allowed in a separate structure on the lot. See Article 1, 206 or ADU definition and requirements. This makes it clear that two houses on a single lot are not allowed. That's sort of what you were talking about with your 301 as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, any, any discussion on that change? Just clarifies it a little bit. The wording we struggled with a little bit, but-
Well, ADUs are required by, by law are permitted in any residential zone. Exactly. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that they could still have an ADU. And it's just because it says you can have something on this list, but you can't say, okay, I'm gonna have a house and another house. So that would be bad.
Yep. Just clarifies it a little bit. Any other discussion on that? Okay, moving on. Five. Right at the top, Historic District 2 is a residential area containing some fine old homes. Propose to remove this area as zoned, single-family residential agricultural, and uses will be permitted in accordance with the Kingston zoning ordinances and in conformance with Historic District ordinances. And replace that with the use of land in a district. And the district is limited to single-family dwellings, agricultural uses, and incidental uses such as private garages, boathouses, tool sheds, gardens, and the like. Agricultural shall, use shall mean land used for agriculture, farming, derying, pastage, apiculture, horticulture, floriculture, silviculture, and animal and poultry husbandry. These uses will be permitted in conformance with Historic District ordinances and regulations.
And I think that, yeah, I think that this on the map showed that it was just zoned as Historic District 2, and, and which is the agricultural. So we just put what the agricultural district says. So it's spelled right out for you what that does. And that's just from our agricultural district. Do you need to add accessory dwelling units?
Um.
I think that's permitted by law.
It's accessory.
We already know that over there. We're doing that over there in HDC already.
It's all, it's all covered under Article whatever 206.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that okay? We actually looked up what, you know, what the zoning for HDC was to, we like-
And it didn't match.
Yeah.
So we're just making it match. No further discussion on that? Let's move to the next one. Page six.
It says, "Perpetuate to sign application. Specific provision, size, and location. All signs must meet requirements for size and location as stated in the zoning and building codes of the town." Kingston Section 303, this is just helping to inform the applicant. Pointing them, giving them a little bit more information where to look. Okay. Next. Moving on to page seven, in the 102.7 section. We add, we propose to add, this is in accordance with RSA 674:46. It's just adding reference to state law.
And that 67446 is the powers of the HDC section.
Right. This, this certificate of approval is pretty much the state law reworded exactly right there. So that's just the law. Any further discussion on that? Okay.
The next section is 102.7.1. Sheds and outbuildings. Certain types of sheds and outbuildings no longer require a town building permit, see 301.1.1F. But within the districts, those structures still, still require a certificate of approval from the HDC. Among other details, style, size, and lot placement will be reviewed.
I think we need to add a capital D to districts.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
And do sheds and outbuildings need to be capitalized?
I don't think so.
No, no. Districts is capitalized because we're referring to specific district, the historic district, not any district.
Yeah.
But shed, but sheds and outbuildings. Oh, I see. Yeah, that should not be capitalized. It is. So, yeah, small case s, o, and b on the first line.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I would just say I have some concerns about this just because it essentially washes away what was just voted in for anyone that resides in the historic district. Because you're essentially, it's essentially going through a permitting process at that point.
Well, they need to, though. Because if someone came in and said, I want a canvas garage shed in the front of my historic district building, that would be completely inappropriate for a historic district. They still are allowed to place it, preferably in the back, but they, they would really need to come before the historic district. We don't want to have sheds, and I, I'm canvas shed, something, you know, inappropriate for a historic home, showing up on front lawns. So they really do need to, and, and I know this is near and dear to you, but it does have an effect on the historic district.
And I guess my counter to that would be the stor, like, people can put whatever they want in their yard, whether it be cars, boats, that are not regulated. But you're telling somebody they can't put it in an enclosed, an enclosed shed or garage that conforms to that where they want, but it can just be out there in the open.
Well, I think we would just work on placement so that it's not obtrusive to, to the, from the street view. I mean, that's, that's what a historic district is.
And we've done that successfully with people who want to put in small, larger, in-between size sheds and need coverage for whatever. And that, that's been worked through very successfully. Never said, nope, you can't do it. Let's look at your property and see where it would fit best, which seems like it allows, for the number of years I've been on the board, I don't ever remember us saying, no, you can't do it.
Yeah.
Let's make it fit in well. So it seems to allow it to happen and allow it to fit in with the historic district. So I, I really don't believe that's gonna prevent anybody from putting up something they need for storage.
Yeah, we, we work with everyone. And if you're in a historic district, you know you're in a historic district, and you kind of want to make it look right anyway. I, I don't think we've ever had-
Well, not everyone, but-
Yeah.
One would hope.
Right.
The other thing besides placement, though, is also like roof style. So right in our design guidelines, it's like you can't introduce a new roof style, like a gambrel roof or something. And so what we've talked with people with sheds is like, you know, that roof style of your shed is not going to match your property, you know, the architect, the architecture of your property. So we've also worked with homeowners on what will really look nice, what will look good in the whole streets.
And so I'd get, just help me understand your, your process a little bit better. So I guess I look at it also as like time constraints for people. They decide, hey, I want to order a shed from Postwork Woodworking, and they can deliver it this weekend. What would be the worst-case scenario? Say they make this decision that I want a shed the day after you've had your last meeting. What is the worst-case scenario of how long that would then be at play for them?
Well, I will tell you that last month, we had two meetings because somebody came up with, came up with a project, and it was a time constraint. And so the Historic District Commission agreed to see that person halfway through the month.
Okay.
So we do make allowances and try, really do try to help, you know, help make it, huh?
And we did it the prior month, too. So there's two months.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Yes, two months in a row, we had a second meeting. You only have to post it 24 hours to meet weather constraints. Okay, I gotta get this done before the snow flies. Besides that, I have the contractor coming at such and such a date, and if I miss that date, I don't see him again for another year. All right, all we need, alls we need to do is get four of us for a quorum. And so we've done that, you're right, twice in the last two months.
Okay, well, I, I won't, I won't be your sticking point on this one, then.
All right.
But going along with that, does that mean we need to change the zoning for the town, though? Because of that, would we need to add something to the bottom that says, except for Historic District? Because right now it says you don't need one. I mean, even if you change-
And that's one problem we've always had with the town is like you could find different definitions for things depending on which overlay or which zone you're in. They'd have completely contradicting ordinances. So that may be language that maybe should be clarifying.
So we took a stab at just adding, for properties in the historic districts, a certificate of approval is still required from the Historic District Commission. Refer to Sections 102.7.1 and 1201.10.E for further information. I mean, that would just be a little blurb at the bottom of that, of 301.1 lot regulations.
So the change we made to the sheds was what number?
That's the 301.
Yeah.
301.1.
So I think if we were gonna craft an amendment to that, it would be, should, should the passage of the changes of the Historic District article go forward, that this, that this change would be enacted.
So, I guess, the way I'm looking, yeah, I'm just saying, adding that to our agenda at the address of the meeting tonight. We can do that. Okay?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, for the-
For an actual warrant article approval on this, Mary Ann, it would just have to say, this would be subject to the passing of the changes to the other article, you know, make sure they're tied together so one doesn't happen and one doesn't.
Yep. Okay.
That sounds good.
All right.
All right. Moving on to page eight.
Yep.
Historic District, all right. Let me read the beginning of this. Upon obtaining an application, the applicant should supply the information relative to such application as may be required by the Historic District Commission from time to time. Before applying, applicants should refer to HDC regulations and design standards in Section 1201.
And the reason for that was because we were thinking that people might just look at the historic district and not understand that there's regulations that go with the historic district.
Yes.
This is important.
Yep.
And also 1201 has all the procedures for how they go about it.
In accordance with RSA 676:9, blah, blah, blah. Commission shall make a decision within 45 days of filing, not receipt.
Okay.
I will just say, it seemed like, so I, I referenced, obviously, that section that talks about filing. It seems a little confusing about when it's considered, considered officially filed within the current 120, 1202.5. It says, "No application shall be deemed filed until accepted by the commission." But then it says, "filed applications will be considered at the next regularly scheduled meeting." So I guess exactly when is it deemed filed? Because obviously, I, I understand you're saying maybe not receipt, or maybe, maybe once it's reviewed and deemed appropriate enough to go on the agenda, it's filed. But it just looks like there's a gap there if we're gonna change that.
Yeah, we need to, what happens is that when we get the application, we have to just deem it to be complete. So, and then it should just say completed applications will, will be complete. What are you saying, Virginia?
Chris, the application itself says this will not be considered for, I can't remember the wording, until it's deemed complete by the chair or the vice chair. So-
But it's contradictory language. It only, it says only filed applications will be considered, but then you're saying it's, won't be considered until it's deemed filed.
Right, tell us, team.
Yeah.
And so we use the word filing because that's what RSA used the word filing, but-
So let's think of how we can clean that up. I don't have that right in front of me, so.
So even though the state says, uses the word filing, I like the word receipt because when it comes into the office, Tori, date stamps it.
But I, I think maybe the reason you were looking for the- But I think maybe the reason you were looking for the changes, that you may re- requires a lot more information. So, I would offer this suggestion. Under 1202.5, Section B, it currently reads, "The commission shall not accept applications improperly completed," but then it says, "No application shall be deemed filed until accepted by the commission," and then "filed applications will be considered at the next regularly scheduled meeting." I think if you put, "No application shall be deemed filed until accepted as complete."
Okay.
If you put, "Accepted as complete by the commission," and I think that would satisfy your concern to make sure the clock isn't running on you on incomplete applications and also to change that language.
And Virginia, wasn't there, there was a definition somewhere of just what filed? You've got it?
No.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. I thought that's why we were like, just going with that.
That one escapes me, I don't remember.
But that sounds good.
But I think that's good wording. I think that covers the ground.
So, that would be, change the regulation and leave this as filed on the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Excuse me. Are we okay to move on, or are we still?
No, you're good.
Okay, good. All right. Further down, under C, "The commission shall promptly notify the applicant, the building inspector, and the selectman of its decision." Note, state law, 676:8.3 specifically calls out the building inspector. Excuse me.
We have no problem with those, but is it part-time?
I think it's part-time, yeah.
It is. The search to fill that back is full-time, so we will be, but I think no matter whether it's a part-time building inspector or full-time, you want them notified if it's spelling it out in the RSA.
Yeah. Because if they're not notified by the Historic District Commission, then when somebody comes in with, asks for the building permit, they're going to go back to the Historic District Commission, and it's going to create-
Right. But this just is an oversight of language because their building inspector is always notified.
Right.
Because the certificate of approval goes to the applicant, one set stays with HDC, and the other one always goes to the building inspector.
Yeah.
But, so it's good to have the words in there.
Right.
We follow that process right now.
Yeah, right.
Adding also, further details on HDC procedure can be found in Section 1202 to help inform the applicant.
Oh, there's the, there was the definition right there. 1202.5B defines a filed application.
Oh.
Yep, so I took care of that.
102.8.1, just added a point one to separate it from duplicate 102.8 procedure above, and to avoid renumbering everything below. Nadine, maybe you could help me with this very colorful page, on page nine.
This was very colorful. Okay, so, a citizen's petition was approved this year, and it was inserted right in the middle of a sentence, so it didn't fit there, so we kind of broke it up into three different sections. The first section in blue is, we moved to 102.1 because it's part of the denial of what we do during a denial, so we just took that information and put it under the denial. The second part, we are considering removing. Reasons for denial shall not be subjective or based on opinion or speculation. And that, we think we should remove to prevent legal issues for the town. There's always some speculation, some opinion. The planning board doesn't have this stated for your board, that no opinion or specu, everything's speculation and opinion, but then you do have to look at facts in order to make your decision. So, that's a thought. And then we took the purple part, and we moved that to the bottom of this thing. So, then it reads, "In considering appropriateness of an application, the commission shall consider, among other things," and then it goes, "A, the effect of the exterior facade; B, the change, if any, in the amount of noise, congestion, traffic; C, whether the proposal is of a design or of materials or purpose or use inconsistent with or detrimental." And then we added, "D, the proposal is of a design or of materials or for a purpose or use inconsistent with the overall character of the district as described in 102.5." So, because this is the guidelines, we try, and it's a little repetitive for that, for D, but it puts everything right there in what you're looking for in an application. Then the purple part is added right there, and the blue is right below it. So, that's a lot to take in, so, questions?
I imagine I would have been your biggest obstacle for this, and I did, I did read through it as we were going over this earlier, and I think where you've placed it is appropriate, and I am not opposed with the removal of the language of the section that you did push forward for. So, I imagine I probably would have been, you were worried about me the most, I'm guessing.
Yes, but there's no language removed, it's just kind of moved around. It is that we-
No, one section, one section is removed.
Right.
But I did look at all the placement.
I think this flows a lot better for the applicant.
Yes, I think it's appropriate.
And the part that you have omitted is part of state law already.
Right, that's, yeah, it's redundant. Yep.
Okay. So, if everyone is okay with those, we're back, we're up to page 10. We've inserted the building inspector. There's the blue part.
There's the blue part. Oh, my gosh, we're almost to the-
Page 11. 102.12, pre-existing use, non-conforming uses legally in existence prior to the enactment of this ordinance may be continued, maintained, repaired, and approved unless and until such use becomes an imminent hazard to public health and safety. Non-conforming uses may not be expanded or changed to other non-conforming uses. The definition of non-conforming uses is in E11C. This is entirely new language, right? This is a whole new thing?
Yep, we just added that into, just like every other zone has pre-existing uses within the town, Glenn?
Yeah.
Right? And the same thing with the conflicts clause, same thing. Just being consistent.
P1-1C, I'm having trouble finding that. P1 goes A, B, C, so I don't, I don't see where, how you have P1-1. It's preamble, preamble two is definitions, so that would be P2 and dash, but again, you'd have a letter, P1 dash A, B, B would be definitions. So, let's look for non-conforming. See if we can find it alphabetically, and then-
P1 dash one.
Okay, P1, P1, it's Article preamble one, purposes authority, then it has A, B, C, so-
C.
Okay, but, so it would be P1 dash C then, right?
Oh, okay.
Now, Article preamble one, so that's P1. Then, after P1, you'd have A, P1A, purposes, P1B, authority, P1C. And then P1C1 would be reconstruction of-
Where do you see that?
P1C1.
P1, C1?
P1C is non-conforming uses. So, you wouldn't have one, another, it's just Article P1C.
Okay.
P1, capital C. So, you take out the dash one.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it was in definitions, which is P2.
No good catch.
A lot accomplished. We worked hard this summer on this.
So, I have a little comment to make. I just happened to be sitting near Glenn Greenwood, who had a fidget over one of the ones we were doing, but we moved on. Do you have a fidget that you would like to speak about, Glenn? I just can't help it, I was sitting close enough to hear the fidget.
I don't have an answer for the fidget. I did write question mark, question mark. We need to reword.
And what, what one is it? Tell us, please. If you're not comfortable with it, we're really in trouble.
It's on page four, and it's where you're talking about adding in the language about ADU and saying that an ADU is a new building, and that is just really confusing to me.
Okay.
So, I, why do you see such things? How do you even see that?
She's a teacher.
I got eyes and ears in the back.
Crossed with a cat, I think, I guess. That's very cat-like of you. But, yeah, I, so I would like to-
So, our goal is to be as clear as possible because it's just us who jargon all this all the time. This is supposed to work for the public, who's not supposed to go, "Huh, what do they mean?" So, have you got an idea?
I don't, but I want to.
So, work on it some quiet time.
And that's why, that's why I feel-
And our other really good wordsmither is right here, the two Glenns.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah, because we, I mean, obviously, ADUs are allowed, and we wanted to make sure people knew that because that was the question, was like, "Well, what about an ADU?" So, we wanted to make sure it's right out front. Of course you can do that.
Yes.
So, help us out.
I absolutely want to work on that. I don't want to work on that in this discussion.
No, yes, that's fine.
Fine.
But, but thank you so much, Virginia, for noticing my consternation.
But, Virginia, just for references, on the same lettering numbering system, it's 102.5A1, not 102.51.
A1.
Well, actually, I don't know if that's what you're referring to. 102.5 is description and permitted uses. And A is historic district one. And then one is the list of all the permitted uses, starting with residences. So, I would put 102.5, capital A, point one. And I'm sure that's not Glenn's fidget, but it says, "Except for additional dwelling," and I always keep thinking of additional dwelling as ADU, but then you're saying, "Well, no, except for an additional dwelling, you can't have that." But then you say, "Exception to the exception is that you can have an ADU."
Great. In the quiet of your office time, Glenn, you can come up with a wording that will be satisfactory.
I will absolutely work on that.
Yeah. So, maybe it should read, "Except for," and, "except for," an accessory dwelling unit. Well, you can have that.
No, no, you can have an accessory dwelling.
Right.
But they're saying, "Except for," you're permitted, the other uses or structures are permitted, except for Nate, sorry, for another house.
It's like trying to decide on a double negative, whether you can do it or you can't do it, so.
It is a wonderful double negative, yes.
He's going to fix it.
Yeah.
Glenn is up for the challenge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else for the historic district?
No, thank you for working with us.
I'm wondering if, from your planning board discussions, there are things that you discussed that we haven't touched on.
Well, the big one was mobile homes, making sure that it was defined, which we've done. I think that was probably the biggest thing.
We spent a lot of time on it and a lot of revisions, and we stayed so late so many times, Glenn never got to get his ice cream and corn. Isn't that right?
Hey, don't give away my-
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. You are, thank you so much. That was a great discussion.
Thank you so much.
Lot accomplished.
If you didn't ask for any comments from the public.
Likewise. We're not in a public session.
Public, not public hearing.
No, not a public hearing, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Take my name tag and go home.
We were like in the weeds for a while. We were like, wait, we need to sign. No, that's great.
Thank you very much for coming, and I think we're going to recall a five-minute break while Glenn goes and gets some information.
And call the joint session completed, yeah.
And we'll call the joint session meeting completed. And we'll call the joint session meeting completed. Continuing with our meeting, next on the agenda is the planning board review and discussion of our town ordinances, rules and regulations, and our amendments for 2024's ballot. Glenn, we tasked you with coming up with some warrant article language.
Yeah.
Can you find it?
Everybody should have a predated model. So this, this is a paramount predicated model that got developed in August. Does everybody have this list?
The one from, no. But it's all outlined in the copy of the minutes, I think. So yes, they do say.
The only difference is I, I live in the summer. If the national number of lightness and sound of the city, like, I just gave them eleven at the corresponding number.
Well, these, these, these should be in order of the way you discussed them. So they, yeah.
So anyway, the first, the first thing we talked about, we had that, was that we were uncomfortable with our definition of family. And one of the comments were, kind of, reflect what fair housing law requires. And so what I offered here are two things. Well, the second thing is the instant definition of family. That's the second one. The first one is HUD's definition of family. And that's that a family includes what is not limited to, following, regardless of actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or marital status, a single person, maybe elderly person, disabled person, near elderly person, or any other single person, or group of persons, be dying together. So, that's so. I gotta tell you, that is saying, according to, according to what's required for fair housing, everything's okay to be a family. Which means, when we look at ours, because it probably was conceived in 1950, it's really very much 1950. We say, a family is one more person, related by blood, adoption or marriage, living and cooking together as a single house, or a number of persons, but not exceeding two adults, living and cooking together as a single house, unit, shall be deemed to constitute a family. I gotta tell you, the whole, whole thing that we say here, you can have more than two adults, in, in this mixture to be a family, just is so outlasted what's really important. What purpose does it have being in our ordinance?
Glenn, do you have a microphone on? I think the reason that-
I can't read that all again. You can't, you couldn't have nudged me five minutes ago.
You put it down on the table. So I think the reason that we were looking at family was because we use the word family in parts of our ordinance. So maybe if we're not going to include family at all, we need to look at any part of our ordinance which has the word.
Which has the word family.
Uh huh. Which basically means a word search.
Yeah.
Through our ordinances.
Because we, this, we, this is not, this does not cover a ton of-
Uh huh.
Families that are living in homes in the town of Kingston. And it shouldn't. I mean, what, why do we, why do we care?
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to just change this definition, not remove it from every other ordinance. Because if this is family defined by heart-
Yeah, because if a single family-
This is just a civil suit waiting to happen. If we deny based off of our very antiquated definition of family.
Exactly.
Right. And, and quite frankly, if you use the definition of related by blood and, or any other, you know, blood related or adoption, and without including, you know, the terms of media or whatever, you know, 200 degrees of separation, most of us are related. And, and, you know, and if you want to get biblical about it, you know, for the people who believe in Genesis, we're all the sons and daughters of Eve and Adam, you know, so, or we're all God's children, whatever you want to put, one big happy family. So it, it's an almost impossible term to pin down. What we need to do is have some defining term that's more real estate related as to what a single-family residential zone is.
That's what we, that's what we should be concerned with.
Yeah.
Is how this impacts land use.
Yes.
Because we're concerned about, we, we fall back on this definition when we try to discover what the impact is on a septic system. And we need to, we need to find a way to do that. Because it's not the definition of family. And us saying that you can't be in that house because you have more than two adults is, well, it's just not legal.
And I think that's why the septic language, it goes off of bedrooms. Because I know four bedrooms houses that 20 people live in.
Yeah, that's-
Versus I know seven bedroom houses that two people live in.
Two people live in. So I, I do think if we're, I think if we find the need, because we use the word family in the zoning ordinance, if we find the need for a definition of family, then we need to at least meet the legal requirements of the federal government.
Yeah.
But, but the older, the other question is, do we need to have a definition for family?
Well, I definitely think we don't need that one that we have.
I, I mean, do we, do we need to have a definition of family?
If we're picking A or B, I'm going B in 1950. I mean, the, the first one.
That's everything.
Everything.
Oh, it absolutely is.
Right.
Anybody, everybody is a family.
Every, because-
By virtue of living together, you are a family.
So maybe it should be-
I'm probably in violation.
Single unit housing.
Yeah, it says we got dwelling unit, single family, we have a definition for that. But it says exclusively by one family. So it exceeds the definition of family then. To back that up, if, if, if we want to base it on number of persons, I, I don't know if you even do that. I mean, you got the Waltons or, you know.
I don't, that's, that's-
I don't think you needed to find that at all. I would just say single unit housing and, and two unit housing. And call them units rather than families.
You'd have to define what a unit is.
Yeah.
You know, it's like a, a kitchen and-
How many places does the word family come up?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I don't know.
I'm guessing a lot, given single family, single family agricultural, no. Biggies, those are the biggies.
We have rural residential, we have single family, we have single family agricultural. But what we have within them, we certainly want to make, I mean, it could be anywhere in our ordinance, we don't know what it's going to affect. So I think we need to do a word search through the ordinance. And see where it is, and then figure out how to find it.
I think you'd almost be better just removing Kingston's current definition of family and not replacing it. But if you want to, if, because now there's a, there's a push now where people are advocating that they want on the ballots, the entire article.
Yep.
Not just the section that's being reworked. If you want everyone to check out at the ballot box and not read anything and just say, this is too much, I'm just gonna vote no on all of it, and possibly not pass what you want, putting way too much in there is a way to do it. If all of a sudden they have to go through the entire ordinance book at the ballot box, they're just gonna check out and need to say, yeah, I don't trust the government, I'm not, you know, doing it, or, you know, some people have the fault, they just won't vote on it because they're not gonna read it. If, if we go into a word search to change every place to use family, I think you'd be better off just, this is an antiquated definition, we'll just strike our definition of family, but I, I would prefer not to replace it with that because then it just says, do whatever you want, the other one.
Yeah, it could be unlimited number of people and, and, you know, so dormitory would be a single-family.
I mean, what it does is say what, at 286, it's basically saying, all those people could be one family.
What's the Webster's dictionary?
When they first came in with the-
I'm looking it up right now.
Okay.
In case anyone leaves on just-
No.
OED or maybe some definitive.
It depends on, so the census has a definition per family?
Webster's, Merriam-Webster's.
All right.
Because HUD, no. Census, I'm gonna go no, without even reading it.
That's, the census is pretty much ours, minus the cooking together.
Of course. I mean, I'm, I'm violating everything. I got two stoves and, yeah. Because in our world, a single family is the stove, how many stoves you got? One? Okay, it's a single-family residence.
I think, I think Webster might be, yeah. Oh.
Just read it, let us know. Come on.
Here.
Oh, never mind.
Do you want all of them?
No, let's just skip that part.
All right. A group of individuals living under one roof and usually under one head. What?
Well, you know, head of house, yeah.
Thank you so much for gender equality. A group of persons of common ancestry, also referred to as a clan, I don't think we can go with that. With or without the K.
God, they're gonna protest.
As derived, no. No. I, I don't know.
What's Wikipedia say? They tend to be a little bit more contemporary.
Contemporary.
Designed or suitable for both children and adults. Fair play.
Let me, let me advocate for my rationale of striking the definition and not replacing it. Any one of those definitions that you replace, that is what's written, that is what you go by, verbatim, black and white, if we find ourselves in a legal battle. If we leave it open to interpretation, it's going to be subjectiveness to the judge based off the evidence presented in the case that is informed. So, so they won't have to merit it on based of what effectually does your definition say, but what is a reasonable interpret, interpretation of the use of the word family in the context of the issue you're dealing with.
And, and they will default to the dictionary definition.
And it does, and it just goes back to the reasonableness of the action taken on whatever the issue is.
Okay.
And for the purposes of our discussions, we never take into consideration-
Mm-mm.
-the makeup of a family.
We don't.
So I-
We don't.
To your point, I think we could safely strike it and never revisit this again.
All in favor of striking? Okay. So the second thing, if I could just step in here, was the 1,000-foot separation that we decided to leave as it is. The reason I asked that we reconsider that is because there were a couple of businesses that approached me about buying some properties on Route 125 in C3. One was a golf cart business, which kind of fits vehicle. And the other one was a heavy equipment business. And, and sort of some talking that we did downstairs between Glenn and myself, we thought if the whole reason for the 1,000-foot separation was for automotive sales, maybe we should just say automotive sales and strike out the rest so that other types of businesses could locate there.
I feel like that was different than the input we got from legal, which was that it was to keep similar businesses, or businesses that were similar in nature from being stacked on top of each other.
Right.
And, and we did hear testimony from Ellen Faulkner, who helped draft that and was on the planning board when it was written. And Glenn Copeland, when we had to, we, the ZVA had to decide on this. And they were adamant that the, as you had pointed out, that they, they wanted to include all those things. They took gas stations out of it because the gas stations, they said, should be determined by the act of protection zone and not part of this discussion. But I think, yes, vehicle sales, not automotive sales, but vehicle sales, trucks and cars, and RV sales were the, the real thing. And what happened was, it was coming up from Plastow, Plastow put in the 1,000-foot restriction, and Kingston a year later didn't want to be, you know, just everybody from Plastow moving up to, to create the Marigold Mile up here. And I, I think because they included trailer rentals, I think probably the mindset was, was RV-type trailers, trailer leasing, and of course leasing is another form of ownership for automotive and, and RVs and stuff. So this refrigerated leasing just got caught in the fact that they were both leasing and trailers. And so they fit the definition, but they were adamant that that was the intent of the board at the time was, was that, that things that filled lots with vehicles was not something we wanted. And we wanted stuff with bigger taxable real estate, you know, buildings on them, and diverse businesses. And that was what they were lacking, was the diversity. And, and so it, it was definitely the intent. Now, the question is whether the town has changed its mind. And is it changing its mind because they didn't see the development happening the way it was back when that ordinance was passed? And that's because the ordinance was passed. So, you know, it, but it's something we could put in front of the town again and see what, whether they still want to restrict that. Now, unfortunately, they listed all those uses together as one use. That was, you know, it was like 13 or 14 different uses that were listed and just, just that one use. There was a group of them, but they all related. And they wanted those restricted by 1,000 feet. And 1,000 feet wasn't necessarily arbitrary, it was, although it was based on Plastow, as he said.
It was very arbitrary.
It, it, yeah, I mean, it was, it was not, it wasn't-
They did it.
Hold out, but, you know, it could have been 500 feet, et cetera, it could have been 2,000.
And, and I guess, and I, I understand you got testimony from them, and I think that absolutely was their intention back then. But I think what I'm hearing from the townspeople is that the restrictions that were put in place obviously didn't fill that void to bring commercial industry into those areas. So I think we may be at a different point now where the town's interested in something else. Because a lot of the businesses and type of events that are allowed, it's either, it's either the trade-off of you're gonna allow some of those businesses go in that are standalone businesses, or you're gonna start seeing people try to put in like strip mall type setups to accommodate some of those other professional offices or uses and stuff like that. And I know all the feedback I get is, please don't turn us into the strip mall of Plastow. But we would like to see businesses being able to occupy space. So I definitely think we're at, I mean, back when this, it looks like this was first adopted, I don't know when the exact amendment to changes of the 1,000 square foot.
2003.
2003. So here we are 20 years later. We obviously haven't filled all those properties with businesses that are contributing to any type of tax base or use. I think we're at a point where we should revisit it because we always hear, why are there no businesses in town? Why, why does Kingston appear anti-business or not business friendly? So I think it's time to propose some type of adaptable to that area.
Well, my concern was, now we're going to have people coming before us and saying, well, wait a minute, I sell golf carts. They're not registered, they're not on the road. Or maybe they are registered, they are on the road. You know, what, what consists of a vehicle is a golf cart a vehicle, or is it just, you know, and how about heavy equipment? They're not certainly, that's not running on the roads, it's not registered, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, some of it is, but a lot of what they're selling isn't. So is there going to be ambiguity coming forward? Are we going to have to start making decisions about how vehicular something is versus something not? That was my worry, and that's why I asked that we bring it up tonight so that we would- That was my worry, and that's why I asked that we bring it up tonight, so that we would, you know, get an idea. Better defined, better not defined. When those people came to me about certain lots in town, and the fact, one, one lot they were really interested in is no longer on the market, so we don't need to worry about it. But, I was, I couldn't say. I can't tell you if this rule applies to you or not, you're gonna have to go before the planning board and we're not really sure what they're gonna say. And then maybe before the zoning board, and we don't really know how it's going to be defined.
And that's why with this, I just think, it's been twenty years, obviously, it hasn't all filled up. Maybe, maybe the townsfolk say, no, we wanna keep it as is and we wanna, we wanna keep those restrictions in place, but let's offer them an alternative. I guess would be my opinion on it, they could decide, no, we're gonna keep it the same, or no, we're gonna move forward. Uh, yeah, we wanna, we wanna try something different to encourage some more businesses along that corridor. But, I, I know the one thing, you know, soon as any, as soon as any. Down anywhere, people are like, oh, let me guess, more storage units or used car dealerships.
Yeah, that, that came up, but we talked about that here, just.
Pilling them up and building them.
Glenn? I can see you squirming.
I, I'm, I'm just squirming because I. I'm just. Not comfortable that this is achieving what we wanted to achieve, except. Maybe it is what people want to have us achieve, so.
Well, I, when I drove down one twenty-five, shortly after I thought about this. And we came to the beginning of C three. There was a storage unit there, they mow the lawn all the way down, it looks really nice, there was, um, LePage's. Beautiful job of maintaining the front, the, the cars are well back from the road, there's a nice lawn in the front, and then the. Next thing was campers in, now they mow nicely in front of their fence, everything looks, it's attractive. And then you look at some of the other businesses as you go down, and they're not quite as attractive, and maybe we should be looking more at. How we want things to look. So that it, it's an attractive community rather than, um. Having a certain distance between them, kind of thing. Just saying, I mean, some of the other businesses, you know, you go up and down the hill and you're seeing a lot of junky stuff.
There's the paradigm, right, there are two paradigms, we're in one. In the nineteen, late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties, we were in the bad used car. Or vehicle sales paradigm. The good paradigm is what Stratum did.
Yeah.
Nobody's, nobody ever complains about the fact that there's Subaru and Toyota and BMW and Jaguar. All right there on Portsmouth Avenue, one right after another, cause they all look really good. But, we didn't, we don't have the design standards that they have. And. I mean, they literally have an open space formula. For every commercial lot in town, and you will have green space, and it's a high percentage. It's like thirty percent of the lot will be landscaped and grassed. And then you can fit your development in beyond that. And that's, I mean, those standards are high. And now on one side of Portsmouth Avenue, their used car dealerships aren't open. So they have one side that looks great, and one side that looks abandoned. Um, not so great. So. I mean, we need to figure out what it is we want.
I definitely think that we need to revisit that thousand foot separation of automotive sales. Going, the reason why I think Stratum looks good is all those businesses you talked about are brand new car dealerships. Yes, they have some used cars, but people trade them in on the higher end vehicles. But, we became a target because there's not a lemon law in the state of New Hampshire, as in mass. So, they bring their dealerships to New Hampshire, cause they can sell you a bad vehicle, because a used vehicle in New Hampshire does not have that lemon law. We have multiple buildings down there that are very small in size. And there are, we actually currently have large dealerships of used cars. Where vehicles are all over gravel parking lots, you're not supposed to have vehicles on gravel parking lots, but we do. And they're down there, and those are totally against the ordinance. So, I was, I was thinking, when I first heard this trailer business, I was thinking of coming, coming to town, where it's gonna be a large commercial building. They obviously specialize in rebuilding refrigeration units, trucks, and they send them out for rentals. I didn't see anywhere that we have anything like that in the town of Kingston. So, we're not talking a small building with a ton of used cars all over the place, we're talking about a business that's gonna generate income to our tax base. Large building, everything they do is inside, yes, they're gonna park them out on a paved parking lot. And I just, I, I just have, I have a hard time swallowing under this thousand foot separation. You know, next door, this gentleman sells dump trucks and he sells commercial vehicles, I see that, but it's not the same business, it's not.
And I think Legal's opinion was, because of the wording in the ordinance, because they were all grouped in there, it's like. Any, any one of these, and I think, I think there was definitely a conscious effort to limit. Used car dealership, used car dealership, used car dealership, but because the way they were grouped in there with the wording, it means, nope, if any of you were in here, so it's like. It, it complete, you know, it creates these large. Payable by a, a vast amount of businesses.
To include heavy equipment and all that other stuff, everything's gonna be categorized now into that. And I just don't believe that the spirit of that ordinance is what that was for. And I definitely think it has to be rewritten or revisited and, because you are gonna shut down these big. That's the people we want on one twenty-five.
Exactly.
And that's the, that's the only joint, we can't obviously pick who we want, but.
But we're looking for people that are going to contribute to the tax base.
Correct.
As a preference.
Right, I don't remember, they, they were proposing six or ten thousand square foot building was a big building?
Yeah.
You gotta work on those big trucks.
It was a big building.
Do we know where that stands now?
They didn't get the variance, so it's unallowed.
They didn't get the variance from the.
From the thousand foot separation.
Zoning, for the zoning board. And they appealed it, or not?
They what?
Did they appeal it?
We did not get an appeal, to no way, no.
And they were, it was a time sensitive.
They haven't come, they, they've made no attempt to contact me to go forward with an application. But that was at the last Z B A meeting, so. The thirty days is this next week, right?
It was the fourteenth.
Fourteenth of.
August, I mean.
So it basically be, oh, it was, it was August, it wasn't September? It was the September meeting. It was the September meeting, so September thirteenth or something, and so thirty days would be next week.
Yeah.
It's also a shame to have businesses spend the kind of money, they probably got fifty thousand dollars into engineering on that. And then, you know, thinking that it was okay, and then finding out it wasn't.
So I mean, according to the guidance that we got from, from HUDI. If this was reworded to say, to break this out, so that. Used, new or used vehicle sales cannot be within one thousand feet of each other. Construction vehicle sales cannot be within a thousand feet of each other. Leased vehicle sales cannot be within a thousand feet of each other. Then you would break this down, because that, they were a leasing operation, they weren't a sales operation. So, that would mean, we don't have a leasing operation within a thousand feet of that property.
Yeah, I, I don't think you can define it by whether it's sales or leasing, because when you're talking about vehicles. It's the same thing, you go to a car dealer and you have two options, if you're gonna go buy the car, you, you can buy it or you can lease it. And they're essentially, you know, it's still your car or truck or whatever that you're leasing.
I think vehicle sales is more geared toward, you could tie it to. Anyone who's engaged and, you know, cause there is an official license you need from the state to sell. Used cars or new cars, and they have the ability to obviously grant plates for it, you can't, they're not issuing out. Uh, you know, plates or inspections at a lea, at like, not a, I know a car leasing. So you, if you would needed some language to tie it to. A authorized retailer of used or new vehicles, uh, as per state, whatever governs the sale of auto, you know. Automotive cars, cause I think selling heavy equipment or trailers is very different than selling passenger cars.
I, I agree, I just think that using the term leasing, then all of a sudden you'll say, okay, well, this dealer. We only lease our sales, vehicle sales, and then the guy next door, well, he only sells them, right?
Well, it's like hurts, too, I mean, you know.
Yeah, so, so, I, I think more than leasing, what they were doing, they, yeah, they referred to as leasing. They leased the veh, the trailers out, but it's, it's more like a shorter term, um, renting.
They're also, I mean, they're a very specific vehicle. They, they, they are refrigerated units, that's a really specific sales product. That is not a used car, that is not a, that's not a construction vehicle, that's a really specific vehicle. There, nobody within a thousand feet was doing what they were doing.
I also think too is, uh, I think if you actually, uh, research the definition of vehicle in the state of New Hampshire, it's gonna be self-propelled. And a trailer wouldn't be considered.
But, but the ordinance says trailer. Says vehicles or trailers. Leasing.
So if you broke, if you broke it out to vehicle, sales or leasing in its own separate category. Vehicle, motor vehicle, sales or leasing. Heavy equipment, sales or leasing. Yeah, so, I, I guess, I guess the decision before the board tonight, are, is, do we want Glenn to come up with the separation language or not? Does the board not wish to pursue this or?
I, I think that would be a good idea, because I think there are some significant differences in uses in that list.
Right, from, from just.
But I, I was just trying to differentiate, not, don't use the leasing versus sales.
I understand, I understand.
Use the motor vehicle.
When I look at Pat's trucks. What they sell there has nothing to do with what was being proposed nine hundred feet away. Nothing, they were two, they're two totally different businesses, except if you read our ordinance. Our council was like, ah, sorry, you might think that, but that's not what the ordinance says.
Cause our, our ordinance says vehicular, trailer, and recreational vehicle sales, so the minute they say trailer.
All of a sudden, Pat's trucks, and what these folks wanted to do were.
But those are the only three things that we discriminate against.
And they were, and, and they're. And they fit two of them.
And so, yeah, so I think it, I think by separating it out, I think we can still maintain the intent of the original ordinance while, while allowing some more opportunity. In it as well, and if that's, if that's what the folks have an appetite for, and they wanna see, I, they'll let us know.
Is this also though, an opportunity, as maybe Stratum or other places have done, to also add language around? Whether it's green space on the site or some sort of aesthetic quality that. Would still retain the desire to, I don't know, to preserve the integrity of the spaces on one twenty-five.
As we pointed out, you know, we have laws against parking on gravel, and yet you go down there and.
But you get, I mean, so it's an enforcement issue.
Enforcement issue, so.
But that doesn't mean we can't include the language in here for future enforcement.
Oh, right, in, in the design of the lots.
Maybe it's, it's a matter of tightening up landscaping. I mean, it says minimum area to be suitably planted and permanently maintained with grass, ground cover, shrubs, and or. Dress shall be twenty percent of the total lot area, excepting shared parking spaces, it's up to curb cuts and et cetera.
Which it sounds like maybe we just haven't.
Is that in C three?
Yes. Yes, C three, minimum area to be suitably planted and permanently maintained with grass, ground cover, shrubs, and or, it should be trees. It's misspelled, trees is misspelled. Okay, shall be twenty percent of the total lot area, so it would be up to us to make certain that in front of that, going down to Route one twenty-five. Is. Maintain beautifully, there's no reason why it shouldn't be.
I think maybe we could ask Glenn if you wouldn't mind, maybe you could reach out to Stratum, cause if you notice, all those dealerships that you mentioned. Have the same buffer.
Oh, yeah.
Between the parking lot and Portsmouth Avenue.
They look very similar.
They all have the same.
Yeah.
Toyota has the same setback, the Subaru's got the same setback, Porsche's got the same setback, they're all lined up and they're all.
They say thirty percent, cause they're lots of bigger, I think, but they say thirty percent, we say twenty percent. I'm not worried about the percentage, cause I think we can accomplish the same thing in the same amount of space.
Are we throwing storage units in?
No, I, I'm. The direction you want.
I think we should.
I will look at separating out K into. Making it so that similar uses can't be stacked upon one another, but the dissimilar uses. Have their, they are separated by their use.
Yep.
I'm comfortable doing that.
Mandatory preliminary review streamlined.
So we talked about this, and, and right off the bat here, we're talking, this one in particular, this is the zoning ordinance, this is found in our site plan and subdivision regs. So, this isn't time constrained by town meeting, this, we can do it anytime.
Okay.
My proposal here is twofold, to, to make it clear that in some instances. Mandatory preliminary review isn't necessary. For instance, in the, under subdivision, we never require someone doing the boundary line adjustment to do a mandatory preliminary review. That's crazy, so we just exempt that right up front, so that they don't have to do a request for a waiver, because that's crazy. The, in subdivision, the most common reason for us to want to talk with them first are those developments that are constructing roads. Because that's what has the greatest impact on wetlands, on changing the environment that they're, for, for lots that are going in. As frontage lots already on an existing road, we don't really care, because they're, they're, the impact they're doing. We see when they bring an application. We don't need to talk with them upfront to say, oh, the road shouldn't be like that, or, or whatever. So, I'm proposing that mandatory preliminary review isn't request, isn't required if you're not doing road construction. With a subdivision. And that then narrows it down, we have so few subdivisions greater than three lots that are frontage situations. It does happen, Falzone turned what was gonna be the conservation subdivision on the old, what was the family name? Um, not Mannan, uh. Anyway.
Hanson.
Hanson, thank you very much, he changed that from one that would have had a road and number, and. Greater number of lots to all frontage lots. So.
It would have looked so much prettier if you could have done it the other way.
It would have looked so much nicer the other way. So, so that's the change to subdivision, in site plan. The, the only, the only give I'm giving here to streamline the process. Is that mandatory preliminary review is unnecessary for proposed redevelopment of existing non-residential sites. So if they're not changing the building layout on a site, why are we meeting with them preliminarily?
Right.
Why are we mandating that they meet with us preliminarily? If they're using the same building, then they're using the same pavement around the building. Why are we saying that they have to come and talk with us?
Makes sense.
When, when it's completely a virgin piece of land and they're changing it to a new non-residential. There might be the reason for us to say, we wanna have that, they would still, according to this new language, they would still have to. Ask for a waiver if they're, if they're doing something on a virgin piece of land. And the board can either say, yes, you don't have to do a mandatory preliminary, or you do have to do one. So the, the, the pass isn't as great under site plan review as it is, as it is under subdivision. And these are just my perspectives, I'm not trying to tell the board to think my way, I'm saying, this is the way that I see we can streamline it. You may say that any subdivision still requires preliminary mandatory review. I just don't see us making that decision, and we grant this very, this waiver all the time.
And maybe we could just say something where it's, if someone wishes to have that, it's optional.
Oh, we're not, we're, we're not making any, um, we're not disallowing anyone from doing. Oh, we're not, we're not making any, we're not disallowing anyone from doing design review. Design review is a state law. And they can do that anytime they want. This, but we do have a standard that says they'll do mandatory preliminary review. And right now, there's just a lot of times where we don't give a squat about that mandatory preliminary review. But if we're granting waivers all the time, it kind of seems like we're downplaying the need for it. We just haven't seen that kind of development that requires it.
Well, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, I just think we should be careful on the waivers, because we've had cases where they have not come in for the mandatory preliminary review. We waived it usually, or they just didn't, it didn't happen. And we get into the actual application and hearing, we find out that there are a lot of things that they didn't complete on the application.
See, and I'm trying, I was trying to think of what, when those instances were. And they're not typically on sites if there's already a building on the site.
Right.
And that's the reason why I'm saying, why are we, why are we saying that on a, on a site where they're simply reusing an existing building and parking area? I mean, they may, they may be slightly altering the parking area, but that isn't, we're not going to get a lot accomplished with a preliminary review on an, on an instance like that. But if they're coming in on a property where they're, what they're proposing is putting in a seven thousand square foot commercial building, and they're tearing down the existing house that's there, then they really should do a mandatory review. You know, I mean, that's, that's completely different.
That's prudent.
You know, and so this is just saying, I think we're going to get, we're going, this is going to result in about half of the waivers that we see not having to be asked for. And that seems like an okay thing to me.
Not that everybody else feel.
But in any event, remember, this isn't something we have to do in March. This is something that site plan and subdivision regs and the planning board can hold a public hearing anytime that they want to.
So are you suggesting this should be an April 1st thing?
I'm saying, when we go along to some of these other things here, that I think you're going to be directing me to provide more information on, that this one sort of slips to the wayside.
So why don't we.
But you have the language, we could do it anytime.
So why don't we put that on the table for April? And pull it off the table in April?
Or it could be for February. Town meeting, we have to have everything done by really the second week of January.
Let's put it on the table till February.
But in February, we can do site plan review, because it's not associated with town meeting.
Okay. Put on the agenda for February. Okay, handicap ramps, the board determined it wasn't necessary.
Yeah, you guys talked, you downtalked that one.
Increased setbacks in lots over one acre in size.
Okay. This one, this is a really, this gets us back to 301. Because 301 sets the setbacks for all the districts, except in cases where it doesn't set it, because the district has a different standard. And so what I did here is I just did a, in 301, it says every lot, you have a twenty-foot front setback and a twenty and twenty-foot side and rear setback. That's what that, that's what it says. But then if you go to the individual ordinances, we have differences. Rural, in rural residential, the front setback is thirty feet. So right off the bat, residential, which is forty-five percent of the zoned area in town, is different than the standard that we have in 301. The twenty and twenties stand, except if the rural residential use is going to be commercial, which we do allow commercial use in rural residential. If you're abutting a residential, a residentially-zoned property, then you have to have a fifty-foot side and rear setback, at least where the activity is against a residential property boundary. So that's rural residential. Then you get to the commercial zones. In C1 and C2, the front setback is thirty feet and thirty feet, but in C3, it's twenty-five feet.
Yeah, they need to be consistent. The other thing I noticed is that, and you just brought it up, you said residential use, like in rural residential, we allow commercial, but if it's against, against residential.
Use.
Yeah. However, in C2, C1 and C2, the setbacks says, abuts a residential property, the fifty-foot requirement is, and C2 says the same thing. And then in C3, it says residential setback fifty feet when abutting a residential zone. And I think we should just say residential property, residential or residential use. Because otherwise, we're, we've got two different standards going. And the consistent standard seems to be C1 and C2. And C3, somehow somebody got that word zone in there as opposed to use.
Use.
And I'm thinking specifically of the one we just had, which was the, the nice house that people just fixed up on 125.
Oh, 125 that was near, that was near that.
The C2.
And, and to have the trailer stacked up twenty feet from their property line would have been, you know, a bit much. And because, you know, they're, they talked about, they had like seven or eight tractors, you know, haulers, tractors, they used to move the trailers in and out to their parking areas and into the repair facility and moving around and taking, they'd also drive them to their leasing. So they had, there's quite a lot of truck activity that would have been on that lot. And, you know, twenty-five feet's not that much extra, or thirty feet's not that much extra, but Peter Bacon played out, one of them has the, has a right away through it. A easement through it. So I just think that's, that should be, just change the word from zone to use in C3, and you're, you're fine. It'll be consistent.
So is the recommendations only to make the setback changes to commercial zones and zones that allow commercial activity? Or are you, or is the recommendation to increase setbacks on all zones?
I wasn't clear from the, from the notes of the discussion that.
I, I wasn't at that meeting, so, and I can say I would be adamantly opposed to normal, single-family residential changing setbacks.
No, no, I think there's no discussion about changing the twenty-foot setback. It's just, I think Lynn in her notes had said something about she couldn't find the setbacks in certain zones, and.
And the reasoning for that is because it's found in 301. It's found in 301. And that's why it isn't called out in single-family, single-family residential. And so the fix there is either to put it in those zones, or to reference where it is found.
Yeah.
Because if you're not, if you're, if you're looking at every other zone, it states right in the zone. And it doesn't state in those zones.
Right. I just feel it should state in the zone what it is. But I also think, if you're talking residential use and residential zone, I think they're two separate things. And if you buy a property in a commercial zone, you've got to know that you're buying a property in a commercial zone. And if the property next to you is vacant, you've got to know that there could be commercial activity there. I mean, it's, it's one of the things that, it's one of the risks you take when you buy a single-family home in a residential zone. So I don't have a problem by saying zone when it comes.
No, you know, it's not prohibiting the use, it's just.
But it's going to be fifty-foot setback, buffer. And I'm not sure that we should discriminate about that.
Well, we do require it in the first C1 and C2, so why C1 and C2?
Right, in C1 and C2, we say if you're, if you will butt. A use, a residential use, then your buffer has to be fifty feet.
Okay.
And that applied to the warehouse project and.
And in, and in C3, it just, it only says if it's zoned residential. So it's only at the boundary of C3. And there are homes spread through C3.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not getting that protection.
Right.
And you're saying you don't think they deserve that.
Correct.
All right, then you and Peter have to have an arm wrestling match. And the winner determines what I write up.
Well, here's the deal. I think you should be consistent.
I do agree with consistency.
And we've talked about that over and over again in this board. And why we're giving, giving the residential uses in C3 the short trip and not in 1 and 2 seems to be something that could be contested quite easily with predictable results. The alternative is to withdraw C2 and C1 from residential use and say zone there too. But I think that we've, we've been through enough cases where, you know, those Zoom meetings for the abutters for the warehouse project, we'll tell you what the general feeling is about.
In all three zones, residential use is legally existing non-conform.
Right.
There's, other than the, the, the allowance for further than a thousand feet from Sunland 125, that you can put.
Age-restricted.
Age-restricted housing in C3. There is no new residential use that's going to occur in any of those three zones. So that's why I think we should have the consistency between the ordinances.
So I make a motion we change in C3 zone to use.
I'll second that. What was it? I'm sorry.
Change zone to use.
And then it will be the same.
And then it will be the same in all three districts.
In all three districts. The change here is that if you are a residential use in C3, and you're not zoned that way, you're not in a residential district that abuts C3, then you're going to be allowed, you're going to be given allowances and buffer. That's what, that's what this, the end result of this would be. And that allowance exists if you're in C1 or C2. It just doesn't exist if you're.
So it's just increasing to thirty feet? I mean, it's not.
Sorry. And the buffer yard, all show fifty foot, even C3 for the, so, and they do have a section for CUPs for residential.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay.
Just for clarity, does Robin need the.
Article 301, about one.
No, not 301. It's commercial zone 3, which is. There we go. Commercial zone 2. There we go. Commercial zone 3. Setbacks is 110.6B, as in Bravo. And it'll say. It'll say, yeah, 106 point B, 1B. There we go. I'm sorry, 110.6. What did I say?
Peter, you are frightening.
I'm.
You have to buy Robin a raise.
I gotta, I gotta get my whole thing. The glasses, okay, so one, thank you, Steve. 110.6, B as in boy, 1B as in boy. Again, residential setback, side and rear only fifty feet when abutting a residential zone. It says right now, and that, we just voted to change that to.
To residential use.
Use.
Yes.
So the rest of this is, we have setbacks for some zones in the zone. We don't have it in other zones. So we either need to put a sentence in that says.
That references 301.
Correct.
Or it just says, the setback, the setbacks for this district are 2020 and 2021. Because those are all residential.
Which makes a lot more sense than making people go hunting through the book.
Yeah.
Right. I have to agree that.
Yeah, I think that would be easier.
Is to just add that language into the residential zones.
So I make a motion that we add the setbacks in each of the zones.
Into each of the residential zones.
And I'll second that.
Can we go back to the one you just were talking about?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that, when these motions come out, it just was basically change zone to use.
Right, change in the word zone.
Change the word zone.
Is that all you want? You don't want reference to the 110?
Nope.
Okay.
What do you mean?
Because I'm going to do the language that says where, where the change is going to take place.
Okay, but right now you don't even say, and your motion says, in the C3 ordinance, change this.
In the C3 ordinance, we're changing this setback.
The fifty-foot setback from.
Residential zone.
From residential zone to residential use.
Okay, so you would like that to be in the motion?
That would, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, sorry.
That would be good.
I thought that was what we were making a motion on, because we were talking about.
Just to clarify, can't we just do all this by consensus? Because there's eventually going to be votes on every motion to move it. Just do it by consensus instead of making, retract twenty motions.
And then you'd have to write language, because right now everyone's just.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good.
So then if, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do by consensus.
Okay. And we're going to put each of those in the, I'm going to put the setbacks in each of the zoning ordinances.
Correct.
Or the, yeah. Okay. Refer to lot size by soil type.
No, let's, can we not do that one right now?
Okay.
Because that is the deepest discussion we have to have tonight.
Okay. The board could simply change the name of the ordinance to conservation open space zoning. The answer to that is, I think we had consensus to do that. Okay?
Yeah.
That's done.
It is much more appealing.
That was fascinating.
The minimum apartment size is determined to be six hundred square feet in section 206 dot four dot E, which is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. It was added to the ADU because it was made part of the building and building lot ordinance standard. And that standard called out in article 301 dot five rented apartments. So that's okay, right?
Right, all I'm saying here is, we, we call it out in the accessory dwelling unit, but that's because that standard was already established in our building lot standard years, years and years ago.
So we don't need to do anything with that one?
We don't have to do anything about that.
Okay. The town has grappled with the concept of feather signs for years. The ordinance prohibits them, so where they exist in town, they're an ordinance violation. If the town doesn't want to pursue these kinds of enforcement issues, they could amend the sign ordinance at section 303 dot C dot 3 by removing the word found in line four that reads, no part may consist of banners, pennants, ribbons, streamer, spinners, or other similar devices.
So I can't believe we're talking about feather flags again, because it literally haunts my dreams. But I think my recollection of the last conversation was that they're permitted as part of the promotional, whatever. But, but because they're temporary in nature.
They're supposed to come down.
They're supposed to come down, and that we weren't going to touch it again, and we were just going to say it's an enforcement issue and let the town decide what it wants to do relative to enforcement.
So we don't need to discuss that one further?
I'm voting that we never discuss.
Okay. All right. 304 dash one states that industrial developments not located in the existing industrial zone must have the approval of the town after being recommended by the selectman. The board wished to discuss this further, it sounds like spot zoning, and it's never happened since he's been here. So we had talked about eliminating that line. 304 dash one.
It's, it has its own page in the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
And it was used, the town used it when Compaire Kellogg.
Yep.
Got located where the big warehouse, 266 happened. But it's never happened again since I've been here.
So we eliminate that altogether, correct? Is there anybody that objects?
Yeah. Right, that was, that's basically.
Yes.
Unlike everything else that we go through, either a CUP, or a special exception, or a variance, or whatever, this was actually, would have to wait around for the next March town meeting to vote on a project that might be a good idea.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, that doesn't make sense.
But, but, but. Because we have zoning. You do that kind of thing if you're a town that doesn't have a zoning warrant.
And the, and the way that it would be forced to be recommended to be put on warrant by the selectman seems like, so if the selectman just didn't like that project, they could not recommend it to be voted on.
Exactly. Or if you really liked one, you could. Which is more scary to me.
What year did zoning start?
Huh?
What year did zoning start?
1972, I think, yeah.
So Compaire Kellogg was after zoning. I was just trying to put it in.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, is that Compaire Kellogg, weren't they like 1981 or something?
I think, yeah, eighty-one, two, three, four, something like that.
It was definitely, it was before eighty-seven, because that's when I started. But it was after seventy-two. And this basically, I don't know why.
I think it was like eighty-four, I want to say.
I do love to history, but I do want to get better.
Exactly. Okay. So we're going to recommend, eliminating that. Okay. Okay. Industrial defined. Do we need to? So let's read that definition.
So we, we have, we have a definition in our, in our ordinance that climbs all the way around in the industrial zone, but never really says what industrial use is. Now this climbs all around it too. But the industrial district allows, the, the actual place where it describes it in, in my sample, starts on with the second line. And that second line doesn't show up anywhere in our existing use, um, in our existing district. So we can either add that in or not add that in, but we should really define industry somehow, and we simply don't.
This is your proposed definition?
Yeah, this is, and this is just, this is just one taken from, I don't know, Rochester or Wakefield or someplace. It's not, there's nothing special about this. It's just we should define somehow what we mean by industry.
How is the industrial district to promote health, safety, convenience, order, prosperity, and other aspects?
Basically because it's saying that heavy industrial uses are, are in a zone that's separate from everything else.
Okay.
Um, and that's why most industrial zones are separate from everything else and typically lie on the fringes of communities, not right, like on the plains.
Away from residential is what you're saying, yeah. Got it.
All right. Any consensus to move forward with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Warehousing is an aspect of wholesaling that provides real estate for the process of wholesaling to happen. Is the concept of storing products and goods so wholesalers can self-supply them to different channel stores, vendors, as and when required. Warehousing is specifically permitted in C1 and C2. In C3 wholesale businesses are allowed. Is there an intent to not allow warehousing in C3? I believe not. I think we should just add warehousing to C3, shouldn't we?
I, I believe that we should.
Yeah, it would certainly fill some of those gaps, cause.
Well, if you allow wholesale businesses, wholesale businesses typically have to have a warehouse.
Yeah.
Because what they do is they bring in a lot of goods and then they distribute it not to retail stores, but to, not to individual retail stores, but to bigger chains or something. I, I mean, it, wholesaling basically needs to have warehousing. And we say wholesaling, it's okay, but we don't specifically ever say warehousing, which makes no sense.
Yeah.
It's no sense.
Let's, let's do a warrant article to put warehousing in.
I hate to go back on something.
Okay.
Can we just remove one word from the industrial definition?
Oh, you can re.
After the industrial district, cause it says the industrial district allows any manufacturing, fabrication, assembly, processing, storage, and distribution use. So if I were a attorney for a company that wanted to come in and do the processing of petroleum storage and distribution of it, you just said that we can do any.
So just say allows manufacturing.
Allows manufacturing.
And then it goes into the prohibited and.
And other ordinances prohibit other things for reasons.
Good move.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Okay. So the one thing that wasn't here was what we had talked about of taking. Hold on. Take me a minute.
Oh, the special exception.
The special exception rules.
I'm, I'm sorry, I really wanted to do that with Peter. And we have not, I haven't asked him to come in and talk with me about it. We talked about it on the phone.
Yep.
About a month ago. Do you remember that, Peter?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And you said you put the list together of what you wanted.
But I didn't do anything about it. And so really I would like us to sit down and talk about it, if that's okay?
Yeah. Cause what we were talking about was streamlining things a bit?
Yes. And one of the things, I, I did look through there, and of all the zones, the only ones that have special exceptions are C1 and C2. I don't even believe C3. I maybe.
Yes, I think C3 too.
Oh, it's the C3, yeah. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it does. So if something wasn't permitted or it wasn't prohibited, it has to go.
And, and, and all three are the same, they have the same, same criteria for special exceptions in all three of the commercial zones.
Cause when we wrote it in 2003, that's what, I mean, yeah, that's what we did.
And, and the only problem I had, and this is what I was gonna talk to you about, is the language on that, I, I think it should, I think it should be separated out so that the purpose of the zone is included in there somewhat, so that, cause it says consistent with the nature of the zone, and then it says, and then you follow these, these requirements.
So have the conditional use permit state that in the first, if you'll re-ear.
Yeah. What the purpose of the zone is, or you can reference the, the, the part of the article that says what the purpose of the zone is. Uh, so that the, the board has an idea of what kinds, other than just listing what was there when they made the ordinance, uh, what you're looking at, what the purpose of the zone is, you know, and what, how it differs from C1 to 2 to 3. And then, um, perhaps make slightly different criteria based on those. And the one I mentioned was the one that, that, uh, we discovered really prohibited certain types of, of businesses that might, the board might otherwise think are a good idea, but, um, the, the way it's worded is, uh, is it, you can't vote, unless it's, it's a no hazard to the public.
What zone are you in?
I, I'm in a special, special exception list, and it doesn't matter which one, this is C2, but all the word is exactly the same. When it says no demand on, or no hazard, uh, no, it should be something like no unreasonable or.
There you go.
Yeah, it's just something that isn't as, is, is finite as the word no, because life is a risk. You're gonna have, you, this, the board's responsibility to mitigate the risk to the public, but saying that you can't accept any risk is, is limiting.
Sounds good.
So I, I, I think just sort of like, there's.
All right, I will, I will do that, and then I'll pass it by you.
Thanks, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pass it by you.
Yeah, and let's have it, cause the idea was if after a public hearing by the Board of Adjustment, a proposed business, so we were saying, instead of having, they could skip that step, and we could just handle it as a special exception.
No, you, you would. CUP.
Yeah, CUP, yeah.
We do that for, you know, lots of things.
Lots of things.
Yeah, and, and there's other CUPs for like apartment uses in commercial zones and stuff like that. We have them all over the place. It's just.
But making the CUP go through the planning board instead of through the zoning board of Adjustment to streamline things.
Correct.
We follow the same criteria pretty much.
Exactly. And, and, um, it's, it's cumbersome.
It is.
I, I do have one more item I would just like to ask the board, and it's something that I discussed with Lynn, and then I discussed with Lynn, and it would be, I came up to it when I was researching ADU stuff and the calculation that we use. At one point that we had decided that, hey, we're gonna use the GLA on the tax card, and there was two options. There was the GLA or the effective GLA. So, and it's, it doesn't really, it just shows them on the same line on the tax card. So me, I went, looked at my tax card, I'm like, oh, I can go off of this number. And then when my calculations were obviously incorrect, I went to the town assessor and asked them about their formulation of how this effective GLA, I'm like, where did you get this GLA number? And he said, well, that's not my calculation. I use the effective, I, our company comes up with the effective GLA numbers, then the town just randomly pulls all the subsurface numbers that have already been, had some type of multiplier, which is usually like .25 or .5 or .75 or for basements .10. So it looks like the town has just grabbed random effective GLA numbers to put on the GLA. And he's, I explained to him, I said, well, this is the situation I'm running into. And he said, well, yeah, effective GLA numbers calculations are a financial tool. They're not a determination of actual square footage.
And the GLA is the actual square foot.
But, but the G, the town, the, no, the town, the. They're from the effective GLA financial calc, yes, that.
The town, the town GLA pulls the actual numbers of what your square footage is, with the exception of attic space. So the problem with the attic space is because they consider it third floor, if you've got, okay, let me step back. If you have a cape, you've got this. And they consider with the, without dormers, they consider if the whole square footage is over here, only half of it is useful. So if you've got 1,000 square feet, they're saying you've got 500 useful square feet, and they use that GLA. If you put a dormer on the back, now you've expanded it, and they use 75%. So you'd have 750 feet. If you have little dormers on the front, it's 10% more. So you add 85%. So you'd be 850 square feet for that second floor. But what the town of Kingston does, and the assessors do for the town of Kingston, is when you take that formula, most people, when we're figuring square footage, use that same formula for attic space that becomes finished. What the town of Kingston has been doing, the town of Kingston assessors have been doing is they take that attic space and with no dormers, they consider it 250 square feet instead of 500 square feet. That's the only place the discrepancy is in the formula that they're using.
And, and so it's, it's subject to whatever assessing company use, formulation you happen to be using, that changes that GLA number, because it is, it's pulled off of those, the finished floor numbers above grade, but the attic is automatically calculated. So.
At one quarter.
My example, it was, so we can round it up to 1,000 square feet, where I went up and measured the actual square feet, and I'm like 700 and like, I'm 720 something, but the way their calculation dumbs it down and puts it at 250 square feet for a finished attic, automatically, and they don't offer any change of that, because they said, this is a financial tool for us. This is a finance, proprietary financial formula that we use. It shouldn't be actually used to determine proper square footage in this case.
So.
So I was wondering if people would be okay if we maybe came up with a, we may even come up with our own table that is not, cause now this, anytime we change the assessing company, it's gonna change the GLA evaluation on a tax card. So I think if we came up with our own set table for the town of how they might apply that, it may be clearer, and it won't change every time, every five years if we get a new assessor.
And I actually have that, that table.
Oh, good.
I actually.
That helps.
After, after my dad went to the hospital, I found, like from the 70s.
But how will I, sitting in my office, getting a new ADU application, and I look at what they're saying their ADU size is, and I go to the tax card, how do I know what I'm, what, what am I using?
Everything is, everything is good until you get to the attic. All the numbers are defined until you get to the attic.
But I think.
A really important one came through that it includes the attic.
But Lynn's table maps out. You can look, you can look at the floor plan and say, this is an attic that has a dormer, so has a dormer, has the two knee wall, so it, it gets, we would come up with our own internal, internal calculation where it's not just flat, and I, and it's not that expansive, I think, what you discussed.
It would just be changing the square footage, the GLA for an attic space, a finished attic space.
So is someone, so are you telling me that someone's going to do that for me?
Sure. I'm, I'll tell you what, I'll draft it, and then you can put it in the legal terms.
But I think what Glenn's.
No, I think.
What I, what I don't wanna be responsible for.
Is doing the calculation.
At the public hearing, okay, I looked at the assessing card that says one thing, but I'm telling you something else. Because I am not, if, if, if an assessor is comfortable saying, that's our own proprietary interpretation, I gotta tell you, as a planner, I am not into changing a tax card to determine how I'm saying whether ADU is a proper size.
Well, but in, in the case of the tax card, their effective GL calculation is their proprietary. The town, he said, listen, I didn't come up with that number. The town's formula, when they input this into the tax card, pulls off of my effective, they decide which lines they wanted to pull off of and just dump it in there, but that's not appropriate for, it's appropriate for valuing square footage, not measuring square footage.
So maybe.
So is the information available on the card somewhere?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause, cause if the, in this situation, what you would do is, cause you would just take, if you have a situation where it's a finished attic, or if there's some other one that falls in this weird category, you would just say, okay, that number just has to be adjusted to this town's table, because it's inconsistent, it's, it's not a, that, we're not going off a financial tool, we wanna go off an actual square foot, square footage based tool.
So that's what I'm wondering, if, how would you know?
And I wonder.
Unless you get architectural drawings from the people who are submitting it, that, okay, this attic that we're basing our main residence GLA on is finished or dormered or with long dormered or, um, you know, whatever.
What this basically means is Chris has been getting a tax break on his taxes, because they've been figuring it the way they have.
Can I just ask, ask a question? When this all started, I was using the effective GLA.
Which is wrong.
But is it off by a lot?
Ted, if you want to use the effective GLA numbers, just don't do the subsurface, because we depreciate anything subsurface at such a rate that it'll essentially balance itself out and work, cause if I worked the numbers of actually applying the appropriate square footage that I measured, you know, based off of the space up there, it came out almost exactly to the total of the effective GLA number. So we could just make the change, cause at one point we had a debate, do we wanna use effective GLA or GLA?
We need to use GLA, because GLA is the legal number that you use. So you have to use GLA. If we wanna make an exception for attic space for the GLA, maybe it can be done on a case by case basis, um, if it's a problem. I mean, it hasn't been a problem before you.
To me, for.
Just saying. I'm not sure it's something we really need to change just for one instance, um, because I don't think it's enough of an issue.
But I think people may, people may not have known that they could have had something in greater space available to them. Cause when you think about it, cause you talk, if they're pulling those numbers from effective GLA, we're not basing, you know, you're not basing the ADU.
It isn't effective GLA. It's the effective number.
No, the numbers.
GLA doesn't go with effective.
But the numbers you can see that they get GLA from are pulled from the effective GLA calculations. Exactly, exactly pulled from, from the effective GLA.
Doesn't say, so what you've got is, okay, let's, let's put it this way. Your first floor is 1,000 square feet. Your second floor is a regular part of a cape, it's 500 square feet, so your GLA is 1,500 square feet, is the way they figure it. If you've got the first floor at 1,000 and the second floor at 1,000, and you have attics unfinished, you get 2,000 square feet. It's real cut and dry until you get to finished attic.
Has essentially a. Redude that their effective GLA, like the other calculation was done.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's so, like you. The GLA is pulled by the town from effective GLA calculation numbers of individual floors. I can show you on the tax card exactly how it was pulled.
I'm very familiar with.
Yeah, I know.
When the ADU does the calculation, it can't be greater.
But you're not applying the effective GLA to the square footage of the ADU, you're just using the overall footprint of the entire thing.
Okay. Let, let's think, the effective, if you're gonna use the effective GLA, you are adding, GLA is your space that's either heated or cooled if you're in a southern zone. That's, that's your gross living area, your GLA. The effective numbers include porches and decks and.
Which are all part of the living experience of the hall.
But they're not part of the gross living area.
But in my finished attic that has mini splits with heating, air conditioning, baseboard heating, it is.
Correct.
It is not being applied evenly.
Correct. And the reason it's not being applied evenly is because it's a third floor up.
Here, here's my question. This is, I, I don't care what you people wanna do. I honestly don't. I want you to be happy with walking aside, but we're predating the size of an accessory dwelling unit on whatever number we use. on whatever number we use. And if our interest is somehow making it a percentage of the size of the house, the size of the house includes the deck. It includes where you, how you live in the house. Why are we not using that? I just don't understand. What we're ending up doing is decreasing the size of this ADU by taking away spaces that are part of what the person in the main house uses to live in their main house.
So you're saying that it includes basement space, crawl space?
Yeah.
Well, because if you-- if you use the effective GLA, it depreciates all of those. But so, like, the way our ADU is written right now, you could have somebody--
But it still gives credit for it and adds it to the square footage.
But by applying numbers differently, you could have somebody put on a-- off the back of their barn, attached to the ADU, that's only 600 square feet, by doing it the way we do it.
But the issue becomes lawsuits happen when people start fiddling with exactly what GL, gross living area is. There's a legal definition of gross living area. It's the area that's under heat and AC. It's your living space under heat and AC.
Calculated off a financial tool--
Not our problem. That's not our problem, that the town has chosen to do it differently. That's not our problem. Our problem is, you know, if I bought a house and it said the effective area was 4,000 square feet, and I now buy my house, and the appraiser suddenly says, "Hey, it's only 2,500 square feet", there's a lawsuit coming.
But the reason we-- before versus GLA and effective GLA is because the state law doesn't specify that. It says one-third of the square footage.
No, no, no.
We say that's state law.
It can be nine hundred square feet, no matter what the size of the house. We haven't said that. We have predicated it on being some percentage of the house.
We could stop that all by just putting a square footage in.
The idea was-- I have 1,000-square-foot house that has a 1,200-square-foot ADU would not be an accessory dwelling unit. It would be a secondary, principal--
Sure.
I mean, I understand that we can get it down to the minimums. That's why we have that minimal standard in ours that says if you have a house smaller than 500 square feet, you can have an ADU, because we require all apartments to be at least 600 square feet, which means if you have a smaller house than that, there is no longer an accessory unit. But this ends up being a matter of 20 or 30 feet in the size of the one, in the size of the accessory dwelling. I reject it, Chris, because it was 36--
But I have seen that difference be 1,500 square feet. I have seen that difference. You're talking about it being 20, 30 feet. I've seen it 1,500 feet. I've seen it 1,000 feet, 1,200. It all depends on the tax card. So there are, there's a lot of places that it's a lot bigger than 20 or 30 square feet.
I think Glenn was talking about 20, 30 square feet in the size of the ADU.
I was talking about the difference between the effective and the GLA.
30 would be the equivalent of 1,000 square feet difference in the GLA, effective GLA.
Because if we thought the difference between the effective and the gross is 1,000 square feet, that means that the difference in the ADU size could be 300. In the sense of what we're trying to do with accessory dwelling units, what the hell difference does that make? What does 300 square feet of living space in an apartment, what difference? Why am I killing myself? We're in the middle of a real housing shortage, and we're using a formula that lets me reject somebody's application because of 30, 60, or maybe because of 300 feet. But does even 300 feet matter? Do you want accessory dwelling--
Well, and I guess, and that would be my argument. I would want to use the number that's most advantageous to the taxpayer and the homeowner.
Why do we have to use a number at all?
Why we don't?
Why do we have to use a number at all?
The only reason I think we need a number is because it has to be accessory, or it's not an accessory dwelling.
But--
So if you end up with 2,000-square-foot house and a 2,000-square-foot accessory dwelling, that's two houses. So that really knocks out the ballpark in the thought that it's accessory. But what we're doing is, and this issue, this, Chris isn't the only one that we've rejected in the last three years. I've been rejected by, because they were too big, and they all came back and shrunk down the apartment by some small amount, which, what difference did it make? Why do we care if the accessory dwelling unit is--
Forty percent.
--exceeds the size of the house by 30 feet? I don't--
So you're saying that maybe we should have a minimum size of 600 and a maximum size of smaller than the house?
Smaller than the house.
That's what I'm thinking, because, well, and let's think about this a different way. If you have a 1,000-square-foot house here, why not add a 2,000-square-foot ADU and now call the 1,000-foot the ADU and the 2,000 the house?
Because I don't, I don't care. I don't care if you say, "Man, do we have a lot of accessory dwellings."
No. It can't look like it has two houses. That's the whole thing. It can't look like it has two houses. So why do we care how big it is if it doesn't have, if it isn't two houses? Why do we need a, why do we need the formula? As long as it's over the minimum.
If the goal is to, as you said, do whatever's most advantageous, can we just use the effective and then--
I think we shouldn't have one at all for the big size. As long as it looks like, it doesn't look like the two houses.
I guess, I guess, would it be okay if maybe I worked with Glenn to come up with a couple options for people to look at? And in the spirit of not extending this meeting? But-- Yeah.
No, yeah. And we increase the need for discussion, because sometimes we don't allow accessory dwelling units in a second unit like we do. It has to be either an attachment or fully within an existing structure. It's not down to that. I think it's better that we allow you to use space in a barn or a carriage house or a whole garage. I think those are all completely appropriate places for accessory dwelling. But I want us to just be comfortable with a size and not have to go to these silly mechanisms of doing a percentage of something, because I don't care. We have to allow accessory dwelling. State law says that. And now we're shooting ourselves in the foot figuring out what that's going to be. It has to be smaller than the originally given. Or if it's a re-giving, the existing unit has to become the accessory unit.
And if it's in rural residential, it really doesn't matter anyway, because they can have duplexes.
They could have duplexes.
Right, which would be, wouldn't be applied to under the ADU.
They're generally the exact same square footage.
They don't have to be, but they can be. I mean, so somebody--
If you're building the new, their developers will go to the same unit twice.
Yes.
That's what they do.
But certainly, if you--
No, this is all predicated on--
For in rural residential--
I'm a single-family residential, and that was the whole idea, getting it to look like something else, like a barn or a carriage house, whatever.
Right, and I understand it needs to be accessory. And I understand that we need, that we could say, "How accessory?"
Yeah.
But I just don't, we're killing ourselves. We're killing, and I kill myself every time I go in, because if we get right and have enough people distributed by 27 feet--
Is that the last topic to come up tonight? You two work on some options, and we'll talk about it in November.
I had a question, the one we skipped over, the soil-based lots and tables. Do you have something to look at for next time?
I guess, again, if we keep up with the really good deal spot, if we might consider--
Pass out the budget. Yeah, we have to do the budget tonight.
A density is predicated on comparing capacity of water and stuff that we require. Because that's what we need. So the state has, the state has minimum lot size labels in their setting system.
They didn't need to save before. That's good.
And these are-- and the Rockingham County Conservation Agency created a soil type lot size construction that allows me to put on much smaller lots. So we need to think about what we're doing here. We have a really large lot size for about 70% of our community. And that's three acres, and that's predicated on the harmful protection. I, the thought of changing that for a lot of the voters in this town, I think has got to immediately be a non-essential. So this is a way of having smaller lots, smaller minimum lot sizes, predicated on science. But it's a huge leap, people, from the way we've done it in town forever.
So why don't we really take a look at this and put this on February?
Yeah, I don't think it's something that we're ready to do right now.
I think it's something to really talk about for February. Okay, there's two more things we have to go over. One is the budget, and then we have a letter as well in correspondence. And we have to do the budget tonight, because I have to present it to the Budget Committee before our November meeting. As you begin looking at this, we have salaries part-time and the COLA. The COLA this year is going to be 3%, they're talking, which would increase the COLA instead of 663 for last year, come up to about 955 raise for that, just to be aware. Books. Contracted services. We always keep contract-- why don't we have an expense for books? Don't we have to pay for the planning books?
We do. And only commissioners get them through the commission. So you'll get one, and Glenn, no, sorry. Who's the other commissioner? Yeah, oh, it is, that's right, yeah. And you'll get the books, but everybody else, we have to pay for for the budget. So when you say books, yeah, there should be--
So we need to keep that 200 in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And you may want to check, because the price of books went up last year, and I don't know if we adjusted that in time.
Can you give them a phone call and ask?
I already got the information.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, because I know you updated on the--
Okay. So we need that number. Contracted services, we haven't used this year so far, because everything got held up at zoning. But I think we should probably keep that in. Any disagreement on that?
What's that contracted services? That's paid out of the escrow account, so it's not actually--
Like, that's usually, even if we charge to that, there's usually money coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we still have to have it there if there's money coming back, or we can't spend it. Copier maintenance, we don't have a copier anymore. So we can cross that off. Engineering consultant, again, we need that in there for the same reason. We lost our copier to the finance person. They left it up here, and Robin uses the main one downstairs. We've talked about maybe-- What, it's not really what?
It's not really cool, Robin.
Yeah, it is not cool. It's not cool at all. We need our own.
Like, tonight, today, Robin did a lot of talking, and she was probably able to do that, because she comes in when other people aren't working. And that doesn't feel right, but it is existent.
So what we need to do--
And we can't copy the ordinances on that machine because it doesn't take the real paper. So I have to come up and use this one.
All right. But we do need it. I mean, they told, they told us we were going to be able to take ours downstairs, and then they didn't.
Did you scan our original work ethic?
Oh, we could attempt even just switching out the copiers, because that one's better.
Which one's better?
That one.
That one? Forms and envelopes, we did spend. That can stay the same. Legal ads, we're going to need more money for, because they've gone up in price. So probably 2,000.
And you've got the actual 2023. Those are just to date, right? So for salaries and stuff, that's just--
Right, correct. Batching grants, probably keep the same. Mileage. You guys been charging for mileage? Anybody been charging for mileage?
That's if you go to conferences. We used to go to Concord--
Ellen used to charge going to the registry and back.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Probably better keep it anyway, although that seems really low. Office equipment. Do we have anything else? Maybe that's what we can use for our copier. Well, you can't--
Oh, yeah, aren't they like 12,000 or something?
Yeah, something like that.
They're ungodly expensive. But you lease them over time. I mean, we do a five-year lease on ours, or four-year lease. I think that's a four-year lease, which helps. Planner. So Glenn and I had a conversation. Don't look at that actual figure. So when we figured the budget for Glenn, we had included two more. Glenn needs, let's put it this way, Glenn needs more hours. He can't serve us zoning, historic district, conservation, historic district, conservation and everybody with the number of hours that he's had. We had budgeted for two more hours and he's now doing those two more hours. So his fee is going to go up.
Here, here's your story. That forty-four nine twenty-four, you see that we upped that like four years ago. So that's been the line item for the, for the planner for three or four years. I, on my current hourly structure where I come in for four hours on Monday and I come in for six hours on Thursday. That just isn't cut enough. So I, I'm proposing two more hours. I'm proposing I just do a full day on Thursday and I go to half day on Friday. So I'm on Monday. So if we, if, if we do that, we still are under the forty-four nine twenty-four.
Yep.
That brings us, it brings us to forty-three sixty-eight or something.
Do you know any contractual changes? We're looking for clause that's a full sub, that quits monthly.
And I, mine, mine does say that. It says it now, yeah. It does. So the, so increasing those two hours will lead, um, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the budget at all. It's still below that forty-four.
Correct. It is, but what if we need you for more time? We need to build a cushion.
Then we budget for next year.
That's what I'm saying. So maybe we should budget it another thousand bucks?
I'd say you put it in, just be cognizant of the word I'm hearing from Budget Committee is they somehow think that we're going to come in and they pass flat lines or with an increased budget. I don't, I do that without thinking stuff up. It represents means you're losing.
Right.
So we have two, you can, you can stay at that.
Advocate it, just know the Budget Committee may.
We can stay at that, but let, let's go in at, at a three percent increase. If they're talking about raising salaries and things, three percent for cost of living, why not go in with a three percent and see if we get it? And if we don't, we don't, but try. I can argue pretty well.
I can, if I come in two more hours a week, it can still stay under this budget. So knowing that.
But I, but I, but I think what you just have to advocate to the Budget Committee, we'd still be within this with a couple of increased hours, but due to potential projects that may come up, we may need some more hours.
Now we're cutting it close. Postage, Robin, you said that's now coming under the select. We're not paying for postage, right?
No, not really. I mean.
We're using the town meter, right?
Yeah, we've always used a town meter. That's just for.
Oh, just miscellaneous? Okay. And we'll include it. Recording fees. What's going on with the recording fees? Do we know?
We had major projects just stalled.
Yeah.
And I think we would have a bunch more recording fees on the projects.
So let's keep that the same. Seminars and training, I don't see that anyone has done anything for seminars and training. Did anybody?
We get them on, we get them free from, some of the animation, animation is free, but also the OPDs are free.
I'd, I'd still keep, you want to keep money in there because if class comes up that you can only get this bill.
Exactly.
You get money on there. And we have a free.
Yep. Looks like we're going to be tight on supplies. We're only fifty dollars under what we spent. We were talking miniscule here. Increase of fifty bucks? Anybody have anything else? And did you get your new computer, Robin?
Not yet, but it's.
It's coming.
On order.
What's, oh, Microsoft three sixty-five, okay.
Yep. And there's no money in here for Microsoft three sixty-five?
No, that I think is part of the town contract.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that. So I'll add it up and go in.
And then as a separate warrant article, I would recommend that we go forward again and ask for the conversion wait full time.
Well, one of the things we've asked Glenn to do is to keep track of his hours as to what's planning board, what's zoning, what's historic district and what's conservation so that. I know, I know. But one of the things we're doing there, I think, shows how much the other departments are using his time. They're also using Robin's time. And we're asking Robin to keep track so that, you know, we can get an idea of how much time is being added to this so that it, it justifies the full time. We, we know the full-time position is worth it, but it justifies it. Yeah.
CBA info.
Yeah.
That's a big thing, I mean.
Yeah.
And I think the town committee knows that. I think the AIG is. I think, I think it just needs to be very strong, having a seat for it. And I think, because the reason, the reason I believe it in the past was one of the few ones that wasn't unanimously supported by the Budget Committee and the Select Board. So the Budget Committee did not unanimously support that one. So I think going down, like, everything seems to be unanimous except this, so let's not vote for this one. So, but I think it was presented, we said, yes, we absolutely need it, but could we live without it? I think it, it just needs to be, it needs to happen.
Yeah. No question. Is everybody comfortable with this? All right. We'll pull it together. And then we got a letter from the Bridges Brothers movers, which is in front of you. Says, Dear Glenn, thank you again for meeting with me recently just to discuss my company's interest in the building located at Eight Diamond Oaks Boulevard in Kingston. So for those of you who don't know, that is the former T Coast United soccer facility. As you know, Bridges Brothers movers has assigned.
It's, they own it.
They own it?
But they.
They don't use it. It's empty. As you know, Bridges Brothers movers has signed an agreement to purchase this facility and we're currently performing due diligence. It is our intent to utilize a portion of this facility as a warehouse to store common household goods for our clients as well as the supplies and equipment used in our business. The property is zoned C three and we have reviewed the permitted uses defined under that zoning and do not find moving and storage specifically identified. However, we believe that our use is very comparable to wholesale businesses which are permitted in that wholesale businesses receive, store and deliver, distribute products with commercial trucks in the same manner that we receive, store and deliver household goods for our clients. The purpose of my letter is to ask the planning board to review and confirm that our intended use is allowed under this zoning as currently written or to amend the list of permitted uses under this zone C three to add moving and storage. As additional information, it may be useful to the, for the members of the board to know that receiving and storage represents a very small percentage of our overall business. We typically receive or load out no more than two to three client shipments each week, so the impact on travel will be nominal. If I can help with any additional information or questions, please contact me at this following number or this email. We appreciate your time and consideration of this request and look forward to relocating our business and our thirty-plus employees. Well, the other company had wanted seventy.
The other company that's going on the other side?
No, there was another company that had this under contract. They told us that they were going to have seven employees or they told, I guess, so wherever they went for their first approval, it was not us. They told seven employees. And then when it came before us, they wanted seventy and the people that share the parking lot said it isn't going to work. And they were able to stop it. And that was a manufacturing facility.
Oh, yeah, that was approved at the CBA level and.
Approved at CBA, but before they, they.
But it was again, yeah, there was very few.
But they misrepresented the number of employees and parking spaces they were going to need and they weren't going to be able to fit the golf and that, and then the new buildings which are going up all on the same parking lot. So thirty's half that.
Really, the only thing I think about when I get down there to play golf, that park. That parking lot seems to be, there's islands, there's a lot of vehicles in there for golf. And they're bringing these trucks in. I mean, are they trailer trucks? I mean, I mean, that's not getting really nothing to do with us, we're talking about the building, but we're talking about lot size.
Yeah, and that was an issue. We talked about that.
I was gonna say, they get these trucks coming in and out of there. They get out.
How often?
I just, I don't know if we have any, I just feel terrible for all these people that bought, have been just put through the wringer in that development that thought they were buying these luxury homes on a golf course.
Yeah.
In a building that had ancillary sports activities like, and now they've now all the site plan issues that they've had with them, you know, that's not our fault. It's lack of builders and people that have done them wrong, but now, now they really don't live on, you know, their entrance to their home isn't really a golf course and sports facility. It's turning into a strip mall and business and I just really feel for those folks. They've kind of been given a raw deal at every corner.
But that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss whether or not moving and storage is compatible in that district. I mean, we've got storage facilities in the district down the street.
Says wholesale businesses. Now, I think this is one of the things you discussed, right?
Yeah.
If that said warehousing. It would, I, it would be an empty question. It says wholesale, which I.
Yeah, that's wholesale isn't the same as, as moving and storage. You're right. That's a commercial, yes. This is what I'm talking about, commercial recreation establishments. They, they looked at what's there and then they wrote the articles. Any retail business, books station. So any retail.
So wholesale businesses are permitted, storage facilities that we've got in the zone.
And retail businesses are permitted.
Mm-hmm.
So isn't this not a retail?
Not a retail.
It's not retail.
I mean, I, I think it meets, I think it meets what's there unless there was something on the site plan that prohibited.
Yeah, I mean, it looks to me like it meets what's there. If it's only a couple of trucks per week, it's not like it's going to be intrusive.
And again, I don't know that it matters.
And I don't think, if, we'd, we'd have to make some assumptions of who's not clerical staff, who's actual movers and trucks and.
Well, they're going to have to give us a business letter before they can get an occupancy permit that tells us how many people, how many hours and all that kind of stuff.
They're going to have to do a site.
Okay.
They already, they already have a lot of thought about that. They want to do a series of changes.
Oh.
They want to change their profile. We have a, we have a product. Determining the traffic.
Okay.
But they, they're trying to make sure that they get over the threshold, I care what this is allowing.
So we have a motion on use or is there further discussion?
Keep in mind, you're going, we're going to be able to change the permitted uses to include warehouse.
I know. I know.
Which would look kind of odd if we just permitted it. That's what I'm worried about is that we're, we're saying that it's not.
Hold the public here and you, they hold the public here and it lessens the standard so they wouldn't be able to build before March coming. Because it's, you don't know if it's allowed until people vote on it. Unless people are comfortable that it falls under the umbrella of wholesale.
It's definitely not appropriate.
Correct.
No, the, the, look at C under. C under all the conditions.
You know why truck terminals were prohibited? When they, when they were talking about truck terminals, I remember very distinctly, they did not want Walmart. The Walmart that just went into Raymond, they were concerned about that coming and they didn't want that. And that's why they said no truck terminals. I remember the discussions like it was yesterday.
I'm concerned about, if I'm describing as moving, that, that's, that's my, my.
But we still, we still have a, we still have a shot at that.
With the site plan review.
Still, there's still oversight and decisions to be made regarding that, well, if the limited on that have. But could it be an actual use if done on a certain plan?
Like, can we say proceed but if it's already turned on?
Well, no. Robin, you, you didn't turn on. We can't, I think what we can tell them is that we see it as a permitted use. However, your project will have to meet all the other criteria for a site plan review. The other type of tri, truck terminal that I think of is like the one in Greenland.
I think that's, that's not considered more like a truck stop.
Yeah.
When I think, when I think of trucking terminal, I'm thinking not even like a single source vendor. I think of less than a, you know, a less than a load shipping center where you have all these trucks coming in, offloading part of their load and be stored there and either picked up or dropped off for other picking where it's heavy, heavy activity is, you know, usually when I'm thinking of a trucking terminal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mentioned that, but see, in my mind, a moving company is not a truck.
No, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't view it as a trucking terminal.
Well, my question is, if it's a moving and storage company, he says they only want to use part of this, a portion of this facility as a warehouse to store household goods as well as supplies and equipment used in our business.
It, it does, crates. I mean, they, they're moving a couple of lots of.
Crates and blankets and. Bubble wrap.
And I guess it could be maybe that, maybe when they, if somebody's staging a home, do they move a bunch of stuff out and they keep it there until they, or they're moving to the next house? Or is that just go into storage? Okay.
Goes into present hand type of store.
So based on what I'm reading as a definition of truck terminal, it does not apply. So high throughput transshipment facilities for unloading products from an incoming vehicle and reloading quickly onto an outbound vehicle with no storage time in between. But they're proposing storage. Proceed.
And we've got storage facilities there already.
Well, so storage facilities are retail operations?
Yeah.
I mean, you, if you're doing a retail transaction, you're paying them to allow you to use their.
Yeah, that's why I thought it's retail as opposed to wholesale. Let's.
Just leave it on.
I mean, the fact that we say any retail business, such as, but not limited to. So I would have thought moving and storage would be a retail business. You, you, they're customers, they're paying for a service. I mean, it's, does retail necessarily mean you're selling them product or?
That, I, that's how I would interpret it.
Okay, okay, yeah, so.
I wouldn't think it's retail. But again, this is an exhaustive list. I'm ready to make a motion that this is. That the Bridges Brothers movers, our proposed use is consistent with the proved uses in commercial zone C three.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous?
We put in the language above.
Site plan.
Yeah.
I, I'm getting back to them, so I'll tell them that, and they already agreed to that.
Did you vote yes or no?
No, I was about to tell Ron, yeah, no, I, I did not vote.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I quietened out, I didn't hear what you said, so make it.
So was it no?
It's a, it's a no, I'm not a saint, no. No, I can't vote no because I, if, if under the retail businesses, retail selling products, then I, I guess, I can't say that. Wholesale is selling products but to redecorate. I'd like it. I think it's consistent.
It's storage.
It's storage. If storage was in here.
But you see, it doesn't, it isn't an exhaustive list. It says such as, so it isn't, you know, exhaustive.
Would it fit under one of the categories though? Like, should we notate the category instead of just being general?
It says wholesale businesses, but yeah.
Like, do you want it under there?
I'm rereading this. The such as applies to the ordinances and regulations that are applicable, not the uses. So the following uses, while permitted in this zone, must comply with all other zoning ordinances and regulations such as, but not limited to wetland, shoreline protection and aquifer protection. So I'm reading that now as.
But if you look at like B, any retail business such as.
Yeah, and, and B was such as that I was talking about.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, M is such as.
The retail businesses, they're listing such as all these things are things that sell stuff.
Lot of red lights on those microphones.
Yeah, the, the, the retail businesses is.
Yeah, the 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 retail businesses, as Robin pointed out, all those, all those are things that sell things, and wholesale businesses also sell stuff. This is a service, moving and storage is a service industry.
But let's, let's take, I'm struggling with this because it isn't, it's, we just have a very limited list here.
I am.
But would, would we say a Hertz rental car facility was not allowed in the C three?
Because.
Or would we say that that's a personal service business? We, we have this list, personal services businesses, and then we list things that are just like, deal with your hair. But personal services are actually those businesses that provide services.
Services, yes.
Is Fieldstone three?
And Hertz Rent-A-Car is a business that provides services to people so that you can rent a car when you don't have one.
I think the, but, not limited to. We used to prove.
Yeah, I, 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 you did, so, but you're right, a personal services such as, but not limited to. I think that would be the closest category, and then you also have that omnibus accessory uses to one or all the. And that's not really an accessory to any of the listed, but.
What Bridges Brothers does is they'll, you're gonna move, so they go to your house, and they, and they take your stuff, and you're gonna ship it to Florida, but they don't have a full truck to go to Florida yet.
So they hold it until they do.
They hold it until you go, so it's, and then until they have enough to fit on the truck, so.
Island business, yes.
Yeah, so it's a service, and that they're, they're shipping your stuff.
And it is retail in that there are competing moving companies.
Oh, yeah.
And, and. That sell to you the service of getting your belongings someplace other than where you are right now.
And they're selling the packing material.
So can you, yes.
I, I'm fine with it, I just couldn't. Pitching all it, and I think personal services.
I gotta say, I, I think that it is, if, if it is not retail because these things seem to be selling something, it isn't, it's definitely a personal service business. Just like Hertz, which we would maybe have difficulty finding a spot here, but I absolutely think Hertz Rental could be located somewhere on one twenty-five in South Kingston.
And they not only do that, but I mean, they go in your house and they pack for you too. So that, that's certainly personal services.
It absolutely is.
So right now you say consistent with approved uses in that zone.
Mm-hmm.
That's okay?
That's okay.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, is there any other business for the board tonight?
Holy crap, if there is, just keep it to yourself.
I declare the meeting.